We'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council, held at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Let's turn some time over to our city clerk, Annie Meredith, for roll call.
Mayor Watkins.
President.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Eric.
Present.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Staley is excused this evening. Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I would like to invite those who would like to participate in our invocation to stand with us, and then afterwards, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. And Vice Mayor, could you do that? Lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. And our prayer tonight will be given by Pastor Michael Bell of Kingman Nazarene Church.
Let's pray. Blessed be the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ. Almighty God, we give thanks and praise to you this day for all your mighty works. You are loving, good, and gracious to us. Thank you for creating and sustaining us throughout our lives. We thank you for this council and the work that they do. We pray that your wisdom and guidance be given to them this day as they seek to further the operation of the city. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory, and may your hand of protection be upon every city worker this day. And let this day be one of rejoicing because of the right decisions that were made, decisions that prospered this city and its inhabitants. Bless us now, Almighty God. In the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point zero three A three to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Item number one on our agenda is appointments to our various city commissions. One A introduction, actually, starting off with the introduction of the Kingman Youth Advisory Council members. Clerk Meredith, or yes, Vice.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Our city manager.
We've got a number of our Kingman Youth Advisory Council members here today. I'd like to give them the opportunity to come up and share their name and what school they participate in, or what school they go to, and then also what grade they're in, just to let the council meet our Kingman Youth Advisory Council. So council members, if you would mind coming up and coming up to the front here and share that information with council. Yeah, right there in the microphone. I apologize. Yeah, perfect.
My name is Elias Wilcock. I'm a junior in high school, and currently, I'm a homeschooler, but I previously attended Lee Williams High School, run cross-country track there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Elias.
Hi, my name is Elise Howson, and I go to Lee Williams High School, and I'm a junior.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Clementine Wilcox, and I go to Lee Williams High School, and I'm a junior.
Thank you, Clementine.
Mayor, we've got a great group of kids. We have eleven total, so three of them are here tonight with us. As you would expect with youth that are involved and want to be involved, they're not only involved in this, but they're involved in a number of things, which is why we don't have the whole group here with us tonight, but we have eleven total that are in our council, and we've had one meeting so far, and it went well, and we're getting ready to hold another. So Clerk Meredith, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I would just say the youth that we currently have on the council represent all of the local high schools and the students that do online schooling, a variety from freshmen all the way through seniors, so we have some succession planning there. And then we are still accepting up to four more members, so if there are any Kingman High School students, we would like to have some additional youth apply to represent that school. And the youth council's first official meeting, they did have a kickoff meet and greet where they got to meet each other and learn a little bit about what they'll be working on, but their first official meeting will be on October twenty-third at 5:30 PM.
Okay. Once again, we are great to have you as members of this youth council, and I was able to attend the first meeting, and great, you are a great cross-section of the youth in our city, and we are proud of you, and because you are our future leaders. So thanks for participating, and have a good evening. Bye-bye. One B, Board of Adjustment reappointment. Board of Adjustment member Kelly Helton is currently serving her first term. I'm sorry, yes, Kathy. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Kathy Helton is currently serving her first mayor that ends on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Ms. Helton has applied to serve a second term on the Board of Adjustment with a term ending on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. Staff recommends approval. Counselor Walker, I think that is one of your commissions that you're assigned to?
Um, okay.
I know.
We never meet.
The Board of Adjustment hardly ever meets.
Yeah, I would make the motion to reappoint her onto the board.
Okay. Any further discussion from counselors?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. One C, Parks, Aquatics, Recreation, and Golf Commission reappointments. Parks, Aquatics, Recreation, and Golf Commissioners and Dory, is it Dor or Dory?
Dory.
Dory?
Dory.
Okay, thank you. Karen Fogg and Steve Smith are currently serving their first term that ends on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. They have all applied to serve a second term on the Parks, Aquatics, Recreation, and Golf Commission, with terms ending on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. Staff recommends approval. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I'm excited that they're going to endure another term. They've been fantastic, so I will make a recommendation that we appoint, reappoint Ann Dory, Karen Fogg, and Steve Smith to another term on the Park Commission.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Vice. Thank you, counselor. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. One D, Airport and Industrial Park Advisory Commission reappointments. Airport and Industrial Park Advisory Commissioners Brandon Laumaisster and James Lorimer are currently serving, they're currently serving their first term that ends on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. They have all applied to serve a second term on the Airport and Industrial Park Advisory Commission, with terms ending on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. Staff recommends approval. Counselor Savage, I think that's your commission?
Yes, it is. James and Brandon both have done a great job on the Airport and Industrial Park Advisory Commission, so I make a motion to have them serve that second term, ending on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight.
Thank you. We have a motion for that reappointment. Do we have a second?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item one E, Economic Development Advisory Commission reappointment. Economic Development Advisory Commissioner Wendy Reisinger is currently serving her first term that ends on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Ms. Reisinger has applied to serve a second term on the Economic Development Advisory Commission, with a term ending on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. Staff recommends approval. And Counselor Savage, your turn again.
Yippee. Yes, Wendy, Dr. Wendy Whissinger, I recommend that she be extended her term to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight.
Okay, we have that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item one F, Transit Advisory Commission reappointment. Transit Advisory Commissioner Jennifer Hayes is currently serving her first term that ends on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Ms. Hayes has applied to serve a second term on the Transit Advisory Commission, with a term ending on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. Staff recommends approval. Counselor Staley is assigned to that commission. I don't think she would have any arguments about that. I think she would support that. I will make a motion that we support Commissioner Jennifer Hayes for a second term.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number two, awards and recognitions. Two A, Arizona Law Enforcement Accreditation Program Recognition, Kingman nine-one-one Communication Center. Chief Jaeger, I think this is yours. Do you want, do you want me to read this first, or would you like to do what, you want to share some information about it, and then I'll read this?
Sure, okay. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, I'm excited to be here tonight about this. The team has worked very hard to achieve this. We're always looking, in order to better ourselves, additional ways that we can build our programs so we can better assist our partners. And with this, it's the law enforcement side of the street and our partners, KPD, so we do everything we can to help our relationship better. We felt it was beneficial to achieve accreditation through the Arizona Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. As you're aware, we're already CLIA accredited, which is national, and this is specific to Arizona, which is also currently the accreditation process that the police department uses as well. On September eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, at the Association of Chiefs of Police Annual Conference, the Kingman nine-one-one Communication Center received Emergency Communications Center accreditation from ALIP, valid for four years without restriction. This accreditation signifies that a center has been rigorously evaluated against established criteria and has met or surpassed the accepted norms for emergency communication services. This ALIP accreditation confirms that the Kingman nine-one-one Communication Center meets or exceed national best practices and industry standards for delivering high-quality emergency communication services. This achievement reflects the professionalism and dedication of the entire Kingman nine-one-one Communication Center team. I do have representatives here tonight with me that was part of the accreditation process, so we are extremely proud. This is, we're dual-accredited, which is exciting, because not a lot of agencies can say that. So with that, Chief, I'd like to say a few words.
Thanks, Chief Jaeger.
I know we don't do this for bragging rights, but I'll be honest with you, I brag about what we're accomplishing here in Kingman as often as I possibly can, and when I'm at the conferences and my chiefs' meetings, I brag on what our dispatch communication center is doing as often, and there's a lot of things that we're doing up here that we're doing well. There's a whole lot, and this is one of those. And I just wanted to let them know that we're your biggest customer, we're probably your biggest diva, as far as the things that we, the demands that we put on you, but I appreciate Deanne and her leadership team and her team, because they're working short-staffed as well, and in the same process of that, they were able to accomplish this dual accreditation, which is pretty amazing. So I would just say I appreciate you and your team so much, so thank you. I appreciate Chief Jaeger's oversight and supervision of the dispatch center.
And it was very awkward to go there and go through the process, as being the only firefighter at a police chief conference. I felt like that wears off, though, but we are, we are proud, and if we could get a picture with you, that would be great.
And I may have spoke when I said I had something to read for you, but I do want to congratulate you and your department, and of course, Chief Cooper, too, for, and of course, it sounds like at least you did have good backup at that police conference, that chief conference, right?
Yeah.
Anyway, Council, if we could get a photo moment? Oh, yes, and, and, thank you. Okay, next, we have an item two B, proclamation for the extra mile day, that I would like to read. Clerk Meredith, we don't have any, do we have anybody here for this?
We do not, sir.
Okay.
So you can just return it to me.
Yes, will do. Whereas, Kingman, Arizona, is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And Kingman, Arizona, is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And Kingman, Arizona, is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And Kingman, Arizona, acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create five-hundred-and-fifty extra-mile cities in America, and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November first, two thousand twenty-four. Now therefore, I, Ken Watkins, Mayor of the City of Kingman, do hereby proclaim Friday, November first, two thousand twenty-four, as Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. It's, of course, signed by me and attested to by our city clerk, Annie Meredith. And you oftentimes have heard me say that I am always so impressed of everybody in our community and what they do to make our community better, and especially in efforts that they look for, for serving others and helping others and giving them a hand up. So once again, we thank you as a council for all that you do, and of course, remember that November first is Extra Mile Day. So do we want to picture anything? We're good? Okay, thank you, Clerk Meredith. Then we have an item two C, proclamation for two thousand twenty-four Alzheimer's and Caregiver Awareness Month. And I think we do have Helen Kohler from WACOG is here. So anyway, Helen, if you want to sit right now, I'll read this, and if you want to come up, we'll, we'll give it to you. But I know a number of us in this audience have been affected by loved ones that have had Alzheimer's, and so I know my mother passed away from Alzheimer's, so I know that it's a very important subject and occurrence that happens in our society nowadays. So I'd like to read this. Whereas, the City of Kingman recognizes the importance of Alzheimer's and related dementia care, and Alzheimer's and related dementia have a significant impact on the health and well-being of our residents. And more than one-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-five-hundred Arizonans live with Alzheimer's, which is the fourth-leading cause of death in this state. Whereas, more than two-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand Arizonans provide four-hundred-and-eighty-three million hours in unpaid care to their loved ones living with dementia. And women are at the epicenter of the Alzheimer's crisis. Almost two-thirds of American older adults living with Alzheimer's disease are women, and women make up to seventy percent of all unpaid Alzheimer's and dementia caregivers. And Arizonans are actively engaged in educating about the disease, advocating for a proper continuum of care, and improving the training and care of patients with Alzheimer's disease and related dementias. Whereas, the City of Kingman supports in Arizona without Alzheimer's, addressing this public health crisis. Now therefore, I, Ken Watkins, Mayor of the City of Kingman, do hereby proclaim the month of November, two thousand twenty-four, to be designated as Alzheimer's and Caregiver Awareness Month. In doing so, encourage all our residents to learn about Alzheimer's-related dementias and patient care. So once again, this is a disease that is in our society. Helen, if you'd like to come up, and is there anything you'd like to share more with, with the council and everybody that's here in chambers?
I would just like to thank the council and our wonderful mayor for recognizing how important this month is. These proclamations help set a foundation for us to go and advocate and bring awareness and educate everyone in our community on early warning signs and symptoms, so Western Arizona Council governments greatly appreciates this opportunity.
Well, thank you for, and what you do, and what WACOG does in making this awareness more, more public. Do we do, should we get a photo?
Get a photo?
Yes, we should do a photo. Okay.
We should get a picture, sorry.
I think we read, I think we read.
We have, I've been to the last.
I know we have. I know you have.
All right. Are you ready?
I'm gonna load the presentation for the next people around here.
Okay, item number three, presentations. Three A, Transit Center Site Selection and Environmental Analysis Presentation. City Manager, do you want to start that off while our department head comes up? Or Sherri, do you want to do that? Okay.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. So I'm Sherri Fur, I'm with Transit Superintendent, and the CART Short and Long Range Transit Plan identified a need for a transit center. Currently, we're in the Walmart parking lot, and that's not ideal. So in order to receive funding, grant funding for the project, several steps are necessary, and that includes a site selection and environmental equity analysis. So CivTech was awarded the contract to complete these, and Allison Shin-Hill of CivTech is here this evening to present to you the findings.
Welcome, Allison.
Hi there. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to present on our project. We're very excited to share this with you. So for this presentation, we just kind of wanted to share the project purpose, introduce the preferred site and the analysis that we did for this project, and then also kind of provide an opportunity to look at the site and for you to ask me any questions, if you have any. So the purpose of the project is to identify a preferred site that can accommodate administrative offices, driver facilities like bathrooms, waiting area, passenger facilities, again, seating area, indoors, outdoors, bike racks, bathrooms, and then also for vehicle storage as your transit system kind of grows or changes, you'll have the opportunity to get more vehicles if that's needed in the future. And then the other part is to conduct a preliminary environmental analysis. So as Sherri kind of shared before, the Short and Long Range Transit Plan identified the need for a new transit center, and also as part of that analysis and that project, they actually did looked at a bunch of different sites around Kingman. So before we even got into this project, there were three sites that were selected from that Short and Long Range Transit Plan, and these are the three sites. So Site Two, Site Three, and Site Six. Sorry, the map's a little small. We'll get into a more zoomed-in map here shortly, but those were the three sites that were identified to kind of move forward in this process. And sorry for the numbering, those were the numbers that were during the original analysis for the Short and Long Reach Plan. So before I kind of get into each of the sites, just kind of wanted to discuss a little bit about the analysis that was done. So we looked at a bunch of different things for each of the sites. We looked at who owned it, what are the conditions of the site, is there enough space for an administrative building or site storage, how many routes are next to the site, what's kind of the transportation access like, are there good bike and pet facilities near there, and are there any major environmental concerns? So for Site Two, right next to Walmart, again, the ownership is the county. The site is actually occupied by two buildings so far, the Adult Daycare and the Victim Center. Again, all four routes are right adjacent, it's actually right next to where all kind of the four routes come together. Around the area is commercial, and also the lot is commercial, which would allow the development of an administrative building and also for vehicle storage. Transportation access, it's fair. The current access to the particular site, there's two access points, but again, with that intersection being there at Walmart, there is kind of the potential to create more direct connections, something that's a little bit safer for buses to get in and out. Bike and pedestrian access is also fairly good. Again, we've got sidewalks on both sides, and then we also have that connection to the Mojave Wash Path. And then for environmental analysis done on this site, again, because it's already developed, so there's relatively no impact to the site. Site Three, which is right next to the library, again, the ownership is county, and the site is currently vacant. This would have adequate space for a transit center and fleet storage. There's currently only, it's only adjacent next to one route, but as if this were the site to move forward in the next phase of the process, you could look at potentially rerouting all the buses so they could get to that, get to that site. Land use is commercial, and again, the site is also commercial. Transportation access is fairly good. These are lower-volume roads that it's off of, and also in the future, when the project moves in kind of its next phases, we could look at doing intersection improvements along Beverly Avenue. And again, bike and pet access is fairly good. We've got sidewalks on most of the roadways nearby, and we've also got access to that multi-use path. And then also for environmental concerns, there is a ravine located on the site, but this could be easily mitigated or avoided kind of in the next phase or design phase of the project. And then lastly, we have Site Six, which is just adjacent to Walmart and actually the other site that we have. This site is actually private ownership. Again, the lot is currently vacant, plenty of space for administrative building and also fleet storage, again, is zoned commercial and also is located in your commercial area. The access is actually fairly good. One thing that would be looked at kind of in the future is kind of reconfiguring that intersection at Walmart so you could get better access to the site. And again, bike and pet access, fairly good, got plenty of facilities for bicyclists and pedestrians. You could also look at doing improvements kind of in the next phase of the project if you wanted to look at any other additional improvements. And then for environmental concerns, there's really none at all on this site. So another part of kind of our evaluation is we had a technical advisory committee, again, made up people from WACOG, from ADOT, from city staff, to kind of also like provide some feedback on the site. So one thing that they did is actually go through an evaluation scorecard. So all the things that we kind of looked at as a technical team, we wanted to get some outside perspective from the city and from WACOG and ADOT, to make sure that we were kind of hitting everything that we needed to for all the sites. So they were able to provide us with some feedback, AKA the scorecard, to kind of see like where everything kind of, where it missed a mark or exactly hit it. So for each of that, they were asked to score a, each of these from like one to five, one being the lowest, five being the highest. And overall, Site Three, which And overall, Site Three, which is near the library, is the one that scored overall the So, the preferred site is the site next to the library. And the reason that this was kind of selected as the preferred site, again, having ample space for an administrative building and for vehicle storage, there's also a little bit of flexibility on where you could put that particular site or put that new building since the site is so big. The location, again, great location next to existing city amenities, to commercial areas, it's also just adjacent from the Walmart where the current routes all come together now. And then also, safety is one thing that we kind of talked about. You know, it's a lower-volume road. For improvements to intersections, like it would look, it would be a little bit easier to improve some of those intersections, maybe not reconfiguring a busy intersection like at Walmart with the roadway is already so busy. And then also connection to multimodal facilities, like the sidewalks and the multi-use path. And then kind of as like our next phases in this project, obviously presenting to you tonight, and then also like the next phase will just be finalizing a report. And that's kind of it for my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Allison. Council, any questions for Allison?
I do.
I do.
Yes, Council for Sandwich?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Three things. Two, you may be able to answer, and then I'll need...
Sherri?
Sherri. We would have to purchase that from the county, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does the academy, the high school, affect that at all?
I don't believe so. So again, like this is all kind of the preliminary like study. This is kind of like the first kind of checkbox in the long list to kind of get that transit facility. So, as kind of you move forward in the next phases of the project, which will be thirty percent design and a full environmental analysis, you could coordinate with other, the schools in the area, but overall, like it shouldn't impact anything nearby.
Okay, and, sure. As far as the admin aspect of this, how many employees do you currently have?
We currently have nine full-time drivers, two part-time drivers, a crew leader, and myself.
As far as the admin?
As far as the admin, yes, we have a crew leader and myself.
So, with the growth and expansion of Kingman, are we gonna plan for the long term for this?
Yes, definitely, we'd want to plan for the long term.
Okay.
And one of the considerations that we have is coordinating with Walapai Transit, and they've had an interest in, in that and partnering with us in that. And then also possibly with Greyhound or Flix to be able to have a connection for, for them as well.
I do like the site. I think that's a good choice there. It's a lot, a lot of room for you to expand for the growth, so thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
So, my questions, I was too concerned, and hopefully in the next step in this process, traffic will be analyzed on that street.
Yes.
That's a high school over there?
Yes.
Yes, high school. So, we have some very young drivers on that road. So, and then, my other question is, what if the county's not willing to negotiate with us on two of the sites, and let's say the private owner, we can't come to an agreement, can you tell us what those next steps look like?
Yeah, so essentially, we'll kind of come back to this kind of planning phase, and we'll do another analysis. So, we'll say, all right, those three sites weren't really the ones that we could get, so let's take a look at a couple of the others. So, we might even go back to what was in the Short and Long Range Transit Plan. We'll look at some of those sites again, see if those are viable, and then also look at any kind of potential sites in the future. Again, you know, ownership might change in the future for other sites that maybe we didn't look at before just because they weren't something that we thought was very viable. But again, we could kind of come back to this process and kind of restart this, so...
And the longer that the analysis takes and the more times we go back around, is there more cost incurred?
Yes, generally, but yeah, it's, it's kind of a tough process because we do kind of all this preliminary stuff. But to do, kind of get to the next phase is that we can't exactly like select a site and start talking with the county yet because then, essentially, as part of like NEPA and Environmental Justice, they'll say, well, you already looked at selecting a site before you could look at anything else. So, we just want to make sure that we're being equitable and looking at everything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilor Eric?
In consideration of Site Two, are we only looking at small buses, or would they be able to accommodate a full-size city bus if we're planning for the future?
Yeah, in the, in the engineering and design phase, we want to be able to accommodate full-size buses.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
I have another question.
Yes, Councilor Sandwich?
On Site Two, is that going to affect the Hydrate Center and what used to be Sarah's House? Are those gonna get demolished, or are you gonna take over the whole lot?
No, so that site, you essentially would just share. And for that particular site, it would only be administrative offices just because there are two existing ones. So, we would coordinate with them, again, in the next phase of the process, to kind of make sure that the design of that building would kind of, wouldn't impede on the other ones. But for vehicle storage, you would have to look at another site, yeah.
Thank you.
Good question, Councilor. Anything else, Council? I think they're all great, three great sites. And one way is, for example, if we couldn't do anything with the county and we could do something with the private site, there's a stoplight right there, and so that gives access to crosswalks to crossover to the shopping centers. So, they're, they're all great sites. Allison, thank you. Sherri, as always, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay. Item number four, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Now, I know there are a number of you that have filled out requests to address the council, but that is on another agenda item that will be coming up later, and so we will get to then.
Mayor?
Yes?
That agenda item doesn't allow for comments, so we have moved them to the call to the public.
Oh, so you have moved them to the call to the public? I'm sorry, okay. Well, then, let's start off with Joan Rankin. Is Joan here? Joan, would you like to come up?
Hi, I'm Joan Rankin. I live in Kingman. I'm in the county. I'm here because of the, the urban camping, okay? I understand there's some sort of problem, but this little guy I have right here, his parents were homeless. He has an older brother that's sixteen months old. I've had him since January. If these kids and their parents were to be arrested, what would have happened to these Yes, now I have full guardianship of them, but there's so many more people out there that have kids, that are homeless, that don't know what to do next. There's not a lot of resources in Kingman for these people. And what would happen to these children? They need help. They don't need to be put behind bars or told they can't sleep in their car somewhere, you know? Thank goodness these parents had the, the smarts to say, hey, I need help, can you take my kids? But if this would have passed before, these kids would have been, God only knows where. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rankin. Rosemary Crabtree?
Hi, I'm Rosemary, and I recently was one of those families who were homeless, living in her vehicle. And I can, I don't have a record, and God forbid I would have gotten one just because I was in a circumstantial situation to where he would have probably been removed from my care, and I wouldn't be able to be where I am today, serving the people and feeding the people that I used to be, you know, just recently. And, and I'm, I'm in a position today to where we're able to talk about God and, on a daily, and feed people because I once was starving, you know? And I just ask that you guys put this on the back burner at least until you get more resources to provide for us because, believe me, I reached out to everywhere in order to not lose my child in the event that I was still homeless when he was born. And there was none. There was, all the beds were full, all of the, nobody would help me. But there are places that are breaking ground and trying to help, but we just need time to make that happen. I just ask that you guys put it on the back burner for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Stephanie Williams?
I don't know who you guys are, so I'm really sorry. Hi. I just wanted to come because my friend asked me to and share a little bit of my story. I was also homeless. I wasn't running amok, I wasn't causing problems, I just fell on hard times. It was really unfortunate, and thank God that these ordinances were not put in place that would have put me in jail for being on hard times. I noticed that we opened with prayer, and I just want to share a couple of things. I just think it's important. Proverbs 21:23 says, whoever closes his ear to the cry of the poor will himself call out and not be answered. Proverbs 31:8 and 9 says, open your mouth for the mute, which is why I'm here, for the rights of all who are destitute. Open your mouth and judge righteously; defend the rights of the poor and the needy. Deuteronomy 15:7 and 8 says, if among you one of your brothers should become poor in any of your towns within your land that the Lord God has given you, so he's given you guys the, the authority to make these decisions, and he's put you over it, which is awesome. But it says, you should not harden your heart or shut your hand against your poor brother, but you shall open your hand to him and lend to him, and it should be sufficient for his need, whatever it may be. I just think it's important that if we are praying and saying, one nation indivisible, you know, and putting God in everything, that we should keep him in everything, that we should be very mindful and prayerful and give people the opportunity to not be out and causing ruckus. I, I don't agree with that, but just give them the opportunity and the resources that they need to be able to get ahead. I'm doing very well today. I have a home, I have property, I have multiple vehicles, I have a successful business, I hold multiple certifications that nobody in the fourteen cities around carry, and my life is good today. I am a youth leader, I do children's church at another church, and it's all because people didn't close their ears. People poured grace, people were loving, people were kind, people were there. And I'm just asking that, as a community, we be known for the people that care, that open their hands, that open their hearts, and stick to biblical principles. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Tina Palomares- Mahrez?
First, I'm really sorry that we even have to be here having this conversation because if we didn't have to be, it'd mean everything was going pretty good, but I thank you guys for your time. I'm a little nervous, but God will get me through it. So, I'll start with, so I have Tiana's Treasure, it's a little place here in town, and we help the people, we feed the people and give them clothes, in Jesus' name. And so, we work with a lot of the people that are homeless, and daily, we're trying to get people into somewhere, all the beds are full. We know there's a lot of places coming, but they're not here yet. And I don't agree with people that are homeless staying somewhere and bringing like bad things with them, you know what I'm saying, or breaking the law. But I was reading what you guys are talking about, and, and so many things were named off that when you suggest them to go elsewhere besides that park or that place, there really isn't a place to go. So, I don't understand where they would go, and I want to give a, one couple that is heavy on my heart, an eighty-three-year-old lady that has been with her husband forever, and he's eighty, and they are, they were sleeping in their car because he got dementia, and he was afraid to be in his home. So, she chose to be homeless with him in their car. And if this was in place at this time with nowhere for her to go to where he felt safe, they'd be in jail at eighty-three and eighty and with dementia. You know, now, by the grace of God, he's in the Linden Felter home, and she's back into the house, but I mean, for like eight months, she's sleeping in his car with him so that she can figure out how to get him in somewhere. It's things like that, and then I just kind of wanted to bring up, one of the reasons I love this town so much, the Los Angeles Times thing that was wrote about you guys. It says, a homeless man wandered in one day, and this Arizona town adopted him. In Kingman, Arizona, residents have embraced an eccentric character who goes by the name of James Zyla. Even though most people call him Santa James, longtime homeless and legally blind, he's found a home in Kingman. And then I was going over some of the article, and it says, after an ugly incident split this town, the citizens found common ground when, when they anointed a homeless poet their adopted grandfather. Ask people what they like about Kingman, and they'll bring up the man known as Santa James. He is a former real estate salesman turned wandering poet who has become the town's adopted grandfather. According to the local police chief, he is also homeless. When residents discovered...
Go ahead, please.
When residents discovered his thoughtful nature in musical gifts, they teamed up to make sure he has a place to stay, giving him gigs to play and helping a hand when he needs it. In return, he shared hugs and songs and had kind free spirit. There exists, Kingman, a spirit of generosity, Santa James told the Times. The community was very upset, says our nominator, Colleen Haynes, who has been at the heart of that effort as a city PR. There's so much more, I, I would just take up too much time, but the point is, you guys gave a homeless man the key to the city. I mean, so he could roam free through, I mean, the key to the city is so important. And so many people talked about how Kingman is such a great place that they welcome in the homeless, and they, they help their community, and they take care of them. And I'm sorry that you're in a position to make a decision on something like this, you know? But the last thing that I just really quick want to read to you is, for I was hungry and you gave me something to eat. I was thirsty and you gave me something to drink. I was a stranger and you invited me in. I needed clothes and you clothed me. I was sick and you looked after me. I was in prison and you came to visit me. Then the righteous will answer him, Lord, when did we see you hungry and feed you, or thirsty and give you something to drink? When did we see you a stranger and invite you in, or needing clothing and clothe you? When did we see you sick or in prison and go visit you? And the king will reply, truly I tell you, when you did for one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you did for me. And so, with that said, I just hope and pray that maybe we could just put that to the side for a minute, that, that whole thing, and let these places that are trying to open up right now, or like the places that we're working on getting going with homes to bring the people in, it just costs a lot of money, and we don't got it like that, but everybody's working on it. And so, if you keep moving them and moving them, all we can do is move them out of Kingman. And that's not right. I, I personally was homeless, chose to be homeless with my, my husband and my child because everywhere I knew, either people were getting high, or they were breaking the law, and I didn't want to live that life anymore. So, we slept in our vehicle in parking lots, in church parking lots, at Walmart, in the parks, so we can give God all of us, all of us, everything that we had in us. And if somebody would have came by and told me to move forward, and I hadn't nowhere to go, I would have went to jail, and we wouldn't be standing here feeding hundreds and hundreds of people a day and getting them off the streets because we wouldn't have been in Kingman anymore. And I'm sorry for all this time.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hi.
Hi. I just wanted to kind of talk about my story a little bit. So I was homeless when I was six and then again when I was eight because the first time, we didn't really have a choice. And then the second time was because my mother and father didn't want to be around, like she said, around the people making bad decisions. And we, that's when we started Tiana's Treasures to feed the homeless people and the people in need. And I just feel that if when we were sleeping in like the train park, if like an officer came by and took us out of the roof that we had because it was a choice that we made and they took my parents and they sent me into a foster home and I would lose them and then we wouldn't have this beautiful thing that we called Tiana's Treasures anymore for God because we wouldn't be able to get where we came, we don't want to have those experiences and what we were taught by God. And I just feel that it, if what's happening, a lot of things, yeah, a lot of the homeless people, there's like certain bad things that are happening with the drugs and alcohol, but 90% of them, they had a bad home situation and they decided to get out of that home situation and the only place they had was a park or the tunnel. Because we talked to a lot of them and there's this one that we talked to and she lives under a tunnel and she had a bad home situation and that was her only way out. So if you guys could just give it a little while and let the people get more places for those homeless people to get a shelter or a bed, because I have sisters who couldn't get them right now because they have nowhere to go and they just live in a, somewhere where they, that they'll be taken out of and put to jail, when we could use the jail facility for the people that are really doing bad and make a big homeless shelter for the people that just need it and just need a place to stay instead of the jails. That's all I have to say. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Tiana. Joe Burns?
Thank you. I help out with an organization downtown on Beale Street, Church on the Street, I don't know if I can mention that, but we are primarily a teaching organization, but we're open seven days a week and we get people in there all the time. So certainly we feed them, we help them out, but primary problem I found with, and we go into Cornerstone and to County Jail again soon and into Whitehead House, we work with a lot of people who have been on the streets, have addiction, problems and issues. And the thing we found is that the biggest problem is the way they think, the way we think. And so down there, our primary concern is to see people redeemed through Jesus Christ and begin to get to know Him. I'm not talking about religion and churches and phoniness and things like that, but a real redemption and new life in Jesus Christ. And He promises that as we get to know Him, He'll transform our minds and the way we think. And that's the biggest problem I've seen with people. They need to learn a new way of thinking, so we try to train them to build new habits. And we have some ideas on how to have an in-house program for men and women, and I don't know how far along this proposal is. And I'm not sure if people are arrested and they get a misdemeanor, do they, all of a sudden, they're in the probation program and they have to have fines and community service and report? I mean, that's going to be a nightmare in itself. And I'm afraid that over the next year, we're going to have more and more and more people who are on the edge and fall over the edge, no longer can afford to live where they're living. And so the problem's going to get bigger and bigger and bigger. So I don't know if the ultimate goal is to get everybody out of town. Somebody said people from inhabitants, who they bring them up here, well, do we want to bring them down there and get into some argument? But I don't know if there's going to be more meetings and to talk about this and talk about solutions, but we have some solutions, but we need help from churches, we need help from the community to get a house for men, a house for women, where we can get these people off the street, get them in a three, six, nine-month program where they graduate. And by the time they're out, they not only know Christ and know how to feed themselves spiritually and see their mind being transformed, but we teach them how to get back into the community, how to begin to be men and women of integrity. We, you know, if a little old lady's house is broken, we'd like to go, I don't, if there's any little old ladies, I don't mean to, I'm a little old man now, I guess, but teach them how to fix it and teach them skills. We have people that want to do that. But, so I don't know if I've missed meetings on all this and we've talked about all these things as a community, but I would be happy to talk to any of you, have you come down to Church on the Street, a few of you, all of you, and talk about ideas, but arresting them, getting them in the justice system does not seem to be a solution. It seems to be contrary to something that will really work. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. I thank all of you for your comments. I know it's a topic that we're up here and we're in the council, we all can be scary.
Sorry, I forgot to turn my mic on. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Item number five, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and it will be considered separately. Counsel, we have items A through M. Are there anything that need to be pulled and discussed? Wow, that's good. Okay, can we have a motion then approving our item number five consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number six, old business, 6A boards and commissions. At a work session meeting on June 11, 2024, the City Council directed staff to update the city code sections regarding boards and commissions. Council desired an option allowing, by a supermajority vote, to appoint board and commission members beyond the standard two terms. In addition, the council desired flexibility in the number of board and commission members as well as setting the frequency and time for those meetings. Staff recommends approval. And we will turn to our city attorney, Carl Cooper.
Yes, sir. So this was as a result of a council meeting that we had, I don't know, probably too many months ago because I'm slow at producing work sometimes. But what council really wanted was to direct, as noted in your description earlier, is that ability to determine the size and the meeting times and the frequency. We did that by resolution, so that's something that you can adopt as needed every year, however we want to do that. So we do have a resolution attached to this which sets that. The ordinance itself, so it addresses that, allows us to do that by resolution. It cleaned up a couple of things, just type of graphical or some structural things. Council really was interested in allowing someone to serve more than two terms. So we're going to have more than two terms by a supermajority vote, which is what council is looking for. And I think those were the major issues on the ordinance itself. The resolution, Annie and I had met with all the boards and commissions, or I think all of them, and got a feel for, you know, are they good with their composition? What are they looking for, for time of day, the dates, their meeting frequency? So the resolution that we've got in here addresses what they were looking for. So this is kind of just a rehash of the discussion we had at the prior council meeting and taking all the council suggestions and adding to that. There's more, I can answer more, but it's actually pretty straightforward.
Okay, Carl. Any questions for Mr. Cooper from council?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I did. I just want to, for clarification, any of the commissions can add a special meeting as they see fit. Is that correct?
Correct. Well, they can do it through the city manager's office, so the city manager is going to make sure that we have the time and the resources.
Right, the notice, yeah. So we still have to, we still have to adhere to the statute for notice of the meeting and the agenda and all that.
Correct, that's pretty basic.
Okay. Tell me about P&amp;Z and an applicant, let's say we have a situation where we have an applicant who has something that needs to be heard and P&amp;Z doesn't have a quorum and it's delayed. So I want to do something to mitigate those delays for projects that are being held up because we can't get a quorum. And I want to make sure that, especially in P&amp;Z's commission, that we can escalate that to council if the applicant wishes to do so. So can you talk to me about that?
Yes, it's, the state statute basically states if we have a planning and zoning commission, they're the ones that will hear a meeting. So we can't bypass them, we can't escalate because of either a lack of attendance or a quorum issue. It has to stay with them for one of their meetings. The way to address that is to be policy decision by council, be careful who you appoint to any of the boards and commissions regarding what could be a potential conflict of interest. So if you have somebody who's heavily involved in a particular industry and they're on that board or commission, you want the knowledge, but then the problem is you're going to have conflicts. Conflicts of interest aren't a bad thing as long as you make them people aware of them, but that's the sort of situation that can happen is if someone is heavily involved in that industry, they're on the commission, they may have a conflict and they have to step out. So then you have to hope that you have the rest of your boards or commissioners and attendants.
Right, because that affects the quorum.
Correct.
Okay.
But I know that the interest of trying to bypass to accelerate, we can't do that. Yeah, we just can't do that. I'm sorry.
Okay, and then is there a way to notice council for attendance? We do have something that does tell us if a commissioner misses a certain amount of meetings, you know, and let's say we have somebody that is missing meetings and, you know, or they just can't serve and that's okay because life happens, right? And so maybe it's due to no fault of their own, but the commission isn't really acting upon that. Is there direction that the commission must or is it something that can be reported up to council and the council makes that decision?
Counsel ultimately has that decision of removing somebody at will for whatever reason. So I think a lot of that's going to be staff being, tracking that and making sure that gets moved forward. I know Annie provided a list. There's an option in our code that says if they have unexcused absences, which just means you don't make a call in, that you're, basically you're abandoning your position. I don't think necessarily that we've taken action on that. And I, you know, I think again, it's one of those things we, as a staff, don't want to obviously do, want to be something that we elevate to the council for those decisions. And I think maybe because now we're aware of these problems occurring, where like say with this P&amp;Z meeting, that maybe this is something that needs to go to council for them in a much quicker manner and maybe just give them those options. I know we did something a few council meetings ago about removing somebody that was unresponsive.
Okay. Just, you know, we, they go through such a lengthy process in development services and it's, we have wonderful people working in that department and we're trying to move things through and then they get to, they get that to the finish line to go to P&amp;Z and that happens. So I'm just trying to mitigate that.
Understand completely. And that's the special issue because that's the league, I'm going to say the legally, one of the legally most important commissions that we have, and it has those notice requirements that have to be done. So if they're, let's pretend that we could bypass, we would still have those notice requirements and I don't know if it would necessarily accelerate the problem, but we can't anyways. But I like to say, I think because we're aware this is a problem, I think we can probably have, make sure staff is doing a, I don't want to say it better because I know they do track things, but maybe be more aware of the situation and bring it up to council for council so you're aware and can make some decisions, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, along those lines in front of you, staff has put together an attendance list over the last two years. So I'll commit to you, we'll start presenting that report to you quarterly, just so you're aware of how those attendances are going. But as you look at planning and zoning, you know, like you had mentioned, absences are beginning to grow in that one. Just looking, I think I counted combined since January of '22, almost 28 absences combined through there. So there are a number of absences that we do need to keep an eye on, so thank you.
Can you, can you also have staff track recusals?
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, if we, if we have someone that is recusing themselves over and over and over again, then, then we're going to need to take action. I mean, I appreciate their service, but if they're going to recuse, you know?
We can do that.
And that affects our quorum, then that's a problem.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Counselor, turn your mic on.
One quick addition to this list. Can you also add how many times or how frequently they meet? That way you know whether, like P&amp;Z meets every month, whereas others meet quarterly, an absence in one or the other would mean that they're gone for half the year versus one month, so.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Thank you, Counselor and Vice Mayor, thank you. You bring up some, both of you, well, all of us, and Manager Walsh, on attendance, you know, especially planning and zoning, it's probably our most important commission. I hate to say that because I don't want to rank all our commissions and we appreciate once again, all those who serve on our commissions, but planning and zoning is one of those critical commissions that we have. So if we can keep an eye on that, if staff can help us as a council, that'd be great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Counselor Walker.
And this is for Manager Walsh. On our boards that meet at needed, is that one or two? Two.
That's Board of Adjustment and Board of Appeals.
Okay, on those two, how quick can we put a meeting together? And what's our standard now and can we move that up any? Because it seems like, I know I've served on a couple of boards at the county and I think we did it a lot quicker there.
I would say that there is a timeframe that's supposed to happen.
Yeah.
I think the last one that we did, there was, I think some of there was some communications going back and forth, there was a switch in city managers about trying to negotiate things, so that one took a lot longer. I don't remember what the timeframes are, but they are, I'm going to say like 20 days. But again, that is trying to, we should do it in 20 days, but you also have to get them together, which is sometimes that difficult part of finding the time.
I know the last one I was involved in, it took a while. And I think we have one right now that looks like it got stretched out a little bit, too.
Yeah, that, I'm not aware of one currently.
I just didn't know if we could close that gap.
Generally, I think that's, sorry, generally, I think that's dependent on our advertising requirements and, you know, time for staff to put those reports together, but yeah, it's something that we can...
Because with Zoom now, somebody could be out of town.
Councilmember Walker.
With Zoom, somebody could, I had it on. Could still be out of town and attend a meeting, so.
Yes, okay.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. So Carl, we need a motion on this, I think?
Yeah, you have two there. You have the ordinance that would adopt, obviously the ordinance, the structural changes in the city code, and then it would need a separate action for the resolution, which is council setting the meeting time, date, all that good stuff.
Okay.
So if you, the ordinance is 1967.
Right. So can we have a motion then approving, anyway, ordinances for boards of mission?
I move to adopt ordinance 1967.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And now to the resolution part of it.
Yes, sir.
I'll move to adopt resolution 5534.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolutions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. I'm going to turn the mic over for seven, new business, 7A, consideration to adopt a notice of intent to increase solid waste rates. I'm going to turn the mic over to our Vice Mayor and I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll see you in a few.
I'll be back in touch. Thank you.
All right, item 7A, consideration to adopt a notice of intent to increase solid waste rates. The solid waste system, the solid waste system is operated and, as its own business unit and the solid waste rate payers fully fund its operations, maintenance and capital costs to ensure that sufficient revenues are being generated to cover the costs of operating and maintaining the system. The five-year financial plan is evaluated and updated if necessary annually. The financial plan update, updated, update presented this evening reflects rate increases over the next five years ranging from 5.35% to 5.70% to residential and commercial customer rates depending on the option selected. It should be noted that the financial plan update is based on the current level of service being provided. If service levels change, another update will need to be performed. Staff is seeking council's input on the updated financial plan and recommending adoption of the notice of intent to consider a solid weight, waste rate increase at a public meeting to be held on December 17th. Deputy Manager Tina Moline.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, and good evening and good evening, council members. So a few meetings ago, I had a very short presentation to talk a little bit about the solid waste financial condition. It was wrapped up with that recycling presentation, but I'd shared at that time that we'd be bringing back to you some more information on what the solid waste financial plan looks like and that is what tonight's item is about. So let's dig right in, there's a lot of material to share with you this evening. So going back to the basics, just quickly, solid waste system, so it acts as a separate business unit. And what that means is that the users pay for the system. It does not get funded by taxpayer dollars or state shared revenues. The users of the system pay for it. The system serves almost 14,000 customers. Most of those customers are residential customers and we serve customers only inside the City of Kingman's city limits. We do not serve, it is not like water and wastewater where we serve outside the city limits. I do want to point out that our regulations require us to provide residential service to our, I'm sorry, solid waste service to our residential customers, but our commercial customers still have the option to choose City of Kingman service or some other provider. They are not required to use a City of Kingman service. Quick look at our current rates. So it's, it's a table of quite a bit of numbers, but I really just want to focus on the residential service right now. We currently charge $20.37 for two, twice a week pickup and we have had that rate in place since July of 2021. I also want to point out, there are a few different arrows down there of services that we no longer provide, but that we do have rates for. Just wanted to share with you, we do not provide those services, but some of our other vendors do provide those services, so our commercial customers can still get that service. So let's talk about the, the solid waste financial plan update. What is the purpose of it? So we need to ensure that the system continues to have sufficient revenues to pay for operating costs, to pay for capital costs, to meet our target cash reserve levels, which right now are 60 days, and to continue to provide that expected level of service. So what has that process been? I want to give a little bit of background on where we were and where we are today. So in 2020 and 2021, we conducted a comprehensive rate study and cost of service study. And what resulted out of that was that there was a need to increase revenues and so the council adopted at the time a 3% rate increase for residential customers and almost a 40% rate increase for our commercial customers. Now, as any financial plan or forecast dictates, it looked at a five-year plan and it's all based on estimates. And at the time, we shared with the council that there may be rate increases in 2022, 2023 and 2024, but that's only based on estimates. And so every year, we evaluate that plan to see if we need to come back to council and look at the rates. So we did evaluate the financial plan a few years ago after those rates went into place and we identified that there was not a need at the time to come back to council and ask for a rate increase. We had trucks that we wanted to order but could not place orders. They were a year out, couldn't even order the trucks. So we were able to save those monies and put them into reserves. Now, we are, last year in fiscal year 24, we looked at the plan again and realized that conditions had changed. So maybe we're not getting the trucks yet, but we can order the trucks, so we've got to pay for the trucks. And the trucks are much more expensive than what they were when we first started ordering replacement trucks in 2021. So when we evaluated the plan last year, we realized we needed to come to you and talk about the financial condition of the system. So what are the primary costs of the solid waste system? It's pretty simple. We have people that are a big cost. We have our landfill and our fuel that are a big cost. Our trucks are also a big cost. And then of course, the fleet, repairs and maintenance, all of the costs associated with that. Those are the four major components for the solid waste budget, comprises 80% of the costs over the next five years of what the solid waste operating budget entails or what is, it's comprised of. I want to talk a little bit about the truck replacement program that we have in place because they are an expensive piece of equipment to run the system. So in 2021, when we adopted the rate increase a few years ago, we'd shared with the council that we were purchasing the trucks outright at that time and we could only afford to purchase one every few years or maybe two every few years. And because we didn't have the monies to do that frequently, then the age of our trucks was, they were getting older and older and older. And so the council at the time said, we need to replace our trucks on a more timely basis and let's, let's have a 10-year replacement program in place and let's finance our vehicles over a seven-year period, which escalated the ability for us to be able to purchase vehicles more timely. So we put that into place right during the pandemic and so of course, that created supply. We realized that the pandemic created supply chain issues and so trucks that we actually ordered almost two years ago and last year, we've ordered, but we still have not received those vehicles. So what that means is our fleet currently is still getting older and older because we still don't have those new vehicles for the replacements. And looking at the costs in 2021 to where we are today, you see that trucks were $324,000 is what the council approved in July of 21 or during that fiscal year. Today, they are $470,000, so a very big jump in costs for our trucks as well. I also want to talk a little bit and just share a little bit, a little bit of background on the age of our vehicles and just our truck fleet in general, since it is such a big cost for the system. So we currently have 31 trucks, big trucks in our fleet and they are broken out by the different type of service that they provide. So we have eight commercial vehicles, 19 residential and then four for extra trash hauls, bulky waste pickup, police abatements, that sort of thing. When you look at the age of our vehicles, which are in each of those tables, you're going to see we have very few that are less than 10 years old. The majority of our trucks are well over 10 years old and well over what we refer to as our estimated useful life and mileage of 10 years, seven to 10 years old and 150 to 200,000 miles. So you can just look at these tables and see the age of our fleet and why it's important that we continue to purchase vehicles. Councilman Eric, did you have a question?
Are all three of these types the same truck?
So they are not all the same truck. They are all a similar cost truck though.
Thank you.
Good question, thank you very much. So, so again, just to give you a picture of what our fleet is, even though we have been wanting to replace our fleet and the council has said, hey, we want you to have a 10-year replacement program, we have yet to be able to accomplish that. We're working on it, but it's going to take some time to accomplish that. On the far right of the screen, you see our replacement schedule for the next five years through fiscal year 29. So this year, the council gave us the authority to purchase three and then you'll see what that looks like over the next five years and what's incorporated into the financial plan update this evening. I also think it's important to share that right now, when we get rid of our trucks and we dispose of them, they're sold, that there is no value for them, no auction value, no market value. And so we end up taking them and getting and selling them for scrap and we get about $3,000 per truck. But if we were on that 10-year replacement program and got rid of our vehicles and were able to sell them in either the open market or auction, we could get proceeds of anywhere from $35,000 to $90,000 for those vehicles and performing that research. So there's that too, that if, if we could get there, that would help with debt service payments and other things on the new trucks. And then lastly, on the fleet, I wanted to share this chart and it is, it, it is very, we have some great data in our work order fleet system that our manager over in the fleet department has put together over the last five years, not just on our trucks, but on our vehicles in general. And I just want to share with this chart, which is the cost per mileage, per utilization and age. And so at the very bottom of this chart are the age of each of our vehicles. On the left side are the miles on those vehicles and on the right side is the cost to maintain each of those vehicles. So it shouldn't be any surprise that our vehicles that are two years old right now are, we've used them about 20,000 miles over the last couple of years and the cost for the maintenance is pretty low and we would expect that. As you go through the chart, you're going to see if at about seven years to 10 years old, we start to see those costs increase and that's because those are the trucks that we're using daily, right? We're getting a lot of utilization of them, using them, there are a lot of miles on them. So there are going to be some maintenance costs on them. But as the years go out, you're going to see that we are spending a lot of money on the maintenance on them, the cost per mile is a lot and we're getting almost no mileage out of them because they are sold, we can hardly, we just don't, can't use them very often. So it just points out that the older our fleet is, the more costly it is, the less we're able to utilize them. So just, just trying to share what our fleet looks like right now. But that's enough about fleet for now and I'd like to move on to just what that rate study back in 2021 looked like to what we're doing today and where we are today. So the first table are our residential rates. So in 2020, we adopted that 3% increase and our rates were at $20.37. It was proposed to increase those rates anywhere from three to three and a half percent over the next few years, whereas in this fiscal year, if we would have gone along with that, we would be at $22.48 for our residential rates. The commercial rates had a similar increase over the last few years or was what was proposed. We did not increase rates, it's been 0% also over the last few years. And since their rates vary, I, I don't have the, the rates as far as a dollar is concerned for those. So looking at our current financial plan, meaning that there is no rate increase or no revenue increase other than just for the growth that we're experiencing, by the time we get to fiscal year 27, we would be below the 60-day cash reserve level and by the time we get to fiscal year 28 and fiscal year 29, we would be in the negative. So certainly, we're bringing to you this evening some options to consider in order to get us to, to a healthy, healthier condition. So we've looked at a few different options. One of those is the current option, which is let's maintain that 60-day cash reserve, continue with our truck replacement program. Another option is to reduce the 60-day cash reserve to 45 days, which in our policy that the city has adopted, 45 days would be the very minimum that our enterprise funds would allow at this point. And maintaining the truck replacement program. And then also looking at some, some extension of the truck replacement program. And I want to make sure that I point out, this isn't extending the 10 years to 12 years, this is just extending how frequently we replace our old vehicles, just for consideration. So that would move from, that would delay the replacement of our trucks over the next five years from replacing eight to replacing six. So let's look at what these different options look like on the next slide. We've got the 45-day cash reserve table and then on the right-hand side, we have the 60-day cash reserve table. And I want to look at the percentage column on each of them and the actual rate increase dollar amount column for each of them. So the 45-day cash reserve is about a 5.35% to a 5.4% over the next five years and it would range anywhere from a $1.09 to a $1.36 increase depending on the given year. If we look at the 60-day cash reserve, it's a slightly higher increase at 5.7% over the next five years and that dollar amount increase would be a $1.16 to a $1.45. I said that I was going to share the options for extending the truck replacement program and they are basically the same as the two that are being presented this evening and that's because again, if we delay our aging trucks, we're going to incur additional repair and maintenance costs and so it would be a very, a very similar increase. So city staff is recommending that we keep with the 60-day cash reserve option. There's not much of a difference between it and the 45-day cash reserve and it keeps our cash reserves healthy. And by, and by doing that, by fiscal year 29, we'll be at the 60-day cash reserve level. We're trying to smooth out that rate increase and have one over the next few years rather than come to you in a few years and basically do what we had to do with water recently and have a very large increase. We're just trying to smooth that out. So what does that look like for commercial rates? So as far as our current rates versus our commercial rates, this is the table of the numbers, but I've talked about the residential service already, that would jump to $21.53 from $20.37. I do have two green numbers on this table, if you're able to tell the difference, and I want to point those out specifically. And that is that these two services that are in green, we are asking to move those, increase those rates to the same rate as the residential service because it basically is the same exact service that our, our commercial customers, customers are receiving that's being provided to our residential service. So it wouldn't make sense for it to be any lower than that. So we are requesting for that adjustment and we are also requesting that the five cubic yards, six cubic yard and eight cubic yard just be completely removed from our rates in general, since we don't provide that service anyhow. So I do have some other considerations. When we shared the solid waste financial plan at a few council meetings ago, we did have some public comment about the rates and about the increases and the difficulty and the challenges that our seniors or that our low-income families have in paying these increased rates. And at our town hall last week, we certainly heard some things from senior citizens and low-income families. So just some other considerations, if it is the appetite of the council to look at, that possibly if, if there's any interest in a low income and/or a senior citizen discount, we'd certainly need to have some parameters that we would need to establish for that. I don't have those at that time, but to give you an idea of maybe some things out there, is there a monthly discount maybe that the council would be interested in offering? Is there a voucher program potentially the council would maybe be interested in offering? One thing I do want to highlight and, and make sure that you're aware is that again, the users pay for the system, so the revenues that we lose would have to be absorbed and that would be just higher rates, right, that we would have to incur. So nothing is free unfortunately. We do have some utility billing assistance agencies locally, a couple of them anyhow. River Cities United Way is one of those that, that does have that program available. And also there is an agency called New Life that offers some utility bill assistance. Probably with anything, it's always about funding, right? So it's not always available, but there, those are some agencies that some of our customers are able to reach out to. Always, we want to compare ourselves to others, other cities. Now, it's never apples to apples, we're all different, we all operate differently, but we always want to see where we stand against other cities. And so this table has quite a bit of information in it as well, but hopefully it's helpful information. We have it sorted by cities. We reached out to about 20 cities and towns, big cities, small cities, regional cities. So the table is sorted by city. Third column in, it says fee ranking, highest equals one. So you can quickly scroll through there and see who's the highest, who's the city that has the highest solid waste service and which city has the lowest. Kingman is highlighted in that green color and you'll see that we are the 16th lowest or 16th highest rather, ranking for fees. We also have in there how, how many times a week the trash service gets picked up, some notes about the cities that they shared with us. We also included in there the truck replacement programs that they have in place. We weren't able to get feedback from every single one of them, but some of them did provide what their trust, truck replacement program is. And then of course, whether or not it's an outsourced vendor or if it is city provided service. So you'll see with Kingman, we are 16th highest, highest fee for twice per week pickup. We are the only city that provides twice per week pickup for the cities that we looked at anyhow. There are several cities that noted that they have once per week pickup and also weekly recycle pickup. Some of them noted that they're in the middle of a rate increase and so we expect that the rates that we're showing here will change as well. But just some more information for you to compare with when you're looking at our rates. So what would be the next steps? The next steps would be to discuss this evening, the different options, select an option to consider. If there are any other considerations that you want to put into place, we'll want to also incorporate that into these next steps. And then over the next two months, we would want to do some public outreach, so certainly social media posts, utility bill inserts, reports on the website, share all the information about what that rate increase might look like for our customers. Hold a public meeting on December 17th and then ultimately. Hold a public meeting on December 17th, and then ultimately adopt the new rates in February of 2025. And thank you.
Counsel, questions? Counselor Eric and then Counselor Savage.
Hi, Tina.
Good evening, Councilman.
I have three questions. Or two questions, actually. One, what would happen if we reduced rate, we reduce service to once a week as well? How, how drastic would we just eliminate half the bill? Does it work that way? No.
It doesn't work quite.
Fleet services, right?
Right.
And payroll. So can you, for upcoming meetings and discussions, can we also just, for the sake of knowing how much reducing down to one pickup a week would cost?
So.
Unless you have it.
Nope, I don't have it. Um, but absolutely. And I believe the reason why, if you look at the comparison to the other cities, there are quite a few of those once-per-week cities that actually offer recycling on that second pickup. And I know we're going to be having a recycling conversation in the next four to six months. And so while I can certainly bring that to you now, I think it, it might be addressed at that meeting as well. But certainly, if that's the will of the council, we can definitely do that.
And then.
I just add one thing to that, too, by the way. To, to make that change, it's an ADQ process that you have to go through and get clearance. And I would suspect there's these other services is why they've been allowed to do that.
Thanks, Carl. And then, I think this is more just me, but is it possible to separate the utility bill so that you have sewer, trash, and water on three separate bills? So it doesn't all clump together?
So all of our solid waste customers receive, you know, our charged water also. And while we can certainly look at that, the printing costs associated with that would be much higher, so it would increase the cost of, you know, of the bills. But we can certainly look at something, something like that, if that's the will of the council, yes.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. Counselor Savage.
Hi, Tina.
Good evening, Councilman.
Nice to see you.
It's nice to see you.
Uh, I, I do have a couple of questions, and one's going to be kind of broad, but the other one, as far as the commercial rates. Why did they go up 38% in 2021?
So the rate study that we conducted included a cost-of-service study also. We hadn't had one of those done in probably 15 years, I think is what it was. And so the cost to, what we found is that the cost to provide service for our commercial customers was much higher than what we were receiving in revenues from our commercial customers. So our residential customers were actually subsidizing our commercial customers. So we had to even that out, and it just happened to work out that a 40% increase was needed in order to even that out. So our residential customers were no longer subsidizing our commercial customers.
Taking on the burden. I totally understand that. And this is the broad one. You mentioned we ordered trucks during COVID. But this has seemed to happen a lot with us, that we're ordering stuff, going into a contract, and it's coming back that we have to pay more. Should we not be getting new bids when those rates go up? Or is that going to delay it even more?
So Councilman Savage, thank you so much for the question. So that is not the case with the solid waste trucks. So we actually get a solid quote before we bring you the financing. And once the trucks are delivered, then we pay exactly what those quotes were. So that's not happening with the solid waste trucks.
But I've noticed it on other items.
So possibly on other items, but not for the solid weight, not for the solid waste items.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? So I just wanted to confirm a couple of things. So it's, it would be a dollar if we went, went with the 60-day. It would be a dollar increase this first, at the initial increase. And then it would be 29 cents over the next four years.
No.
Ish.
No. Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor, for that question.
Okay.
No. It would be a $1.09 the first, so, dollar, $1.16 the first year, so February.
So it's not the difference.
It's not the difference.
I was being optimistic. Okay. I, I did want to give kudos to Fleet Services because you are amazing in keeping those trucks on the road for as long as you are. So I'm sure they don't get kudos enough, but thank you for keeping our fleet going as long as I can. I'm leaning towards the, the 60-day option, the 60-day cash reserve. I don't know how the rest of the council is feeling, but.
Vice Mayor. If I may, just one question for Tina. As the case is here, we, we didn't enact any increases the last couple of years because it wasn't needed. So in looking at the projections going forward, so right now, we're showing a projection of, of those years going forward, and maybe I'm looking at this wrong, but with, looking at those going forward, if those increases aren't needed in future years, we would hold off on those as well.
That's correct. Thank you so much, Manager Walsh. That is correct. We're only, anything that would happen this year would be an adoption of the first year's rate increase. As with any financial plan, we make estimates on what those rate increases might be in the future, but we will always come back to you the next year if there's, if anything has changed. So that is correct. It doesn't mean that we're adopting the five years' worth of rate changes. We're just looking at the first year, but we're giving you a projection of what it could look like.
However, not likely for a decrease. It's more about an increase.
Not likely for a decrease, correct, Vice Mayor? Maybe the same.
Maybe the same. Or to your point, I, I mean, it's valid. We haven't had a rate increase since '21, so, you know, I think we're playing a little bit of a catch-up. So, but thank you for that, that point, that we're not adopting the five-year, we're just adopting the one, which is the dollar increase.
That's right.
Over what it is currently for residential customers at the 60, 60-day cash reserve.
That's correct, Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Did you have something, Counselor Eric?
I was just going to give an opinion.
Okay, go ahead.
So I was also for the 60-day that also kept us at eight trucks.
Okay.
Because that would replace everything 20 or over, which costs us more to run than keep. So that would be my leaning.
Counsel Ward?
I would go with the 60-day reserve option.
Okay.
The one question I had, if we reduce the service to once a week, how much does that reduce, reduce our overall cost? We still have the cost for the equipment and the paper.
And so thank you, Councilman Ward. I guess just in general, I won't know the numbers, Councilman Eric, but in general, we still have the same amount of trash that needs to go to the landfill, right? So we would have to offer a second can or something so that we could continue to take the same amount of trash to the landfill. So there might be a savings, but not, not like in half or even probably two-thirds, correct?
Because I saw where some of them have a, a two-can. Well, that's twice as much garbage as the same day, so you. Yep, that was my only question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Walker?
I'm glad to see that the basic commercial fee is now equal to the residential, because I thought last time we looked at this, that that was out of whack, and it looked like residential was subsidizing commercial, which I'm glad to see we finally saw that. But I'm leaning towards the 60-day reserve as well.
Counselor Savage, you?
60 days. Now, the only, only problem I see of even contemplating going to one day a week, like you said, you're still going to have the same amount of trash, and then you're going to get the commercial people getting their trashcans overloaded because of the residential people not being able to get that second day. So I am not for one day a week at all.
All right, if there's no other comments, I will entertain a motion to move this notice of intent to consider a rate increase at a public meeting to be held on December 17th.
So moved.
Do I have, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, thank you. Annie, did you want to go get the mayor, please?
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor and Counsel.
Glad to be back. Just want to let you know, there's some great candy back in the conference room, and all the Snickers are gone. Okay, under new business item 7B, approve the lease purchase of three, 2025 Peterbilt 520 solid waste trucks in resolution number 5531, providing for authorization to enter, enter into a lease agreement and escrow agreement with ZMFU2, Roman numeral two incorporated, a subsidiary of Zion's Bank Corporation, N.A., to finance the trucks. The fiscal year 2024-25 adopted budget and five-year capital improvement plan includes the replacement of three solid waste trucks. The trucks being replaced are anywhere from 23 to 27 years old. Phoenix Cooperative Contract Number 160791-0 is being utilized for the $1,411,459.29 purchase of the trucks. And Zion's Bank Corporation, N.A. Zion's, is being utilized to finance the trucks over seven years. The solid waste fund will be impacted from fiscal year 2025-26 through fiscal year 2031 to '32 by a total of $1,677,914.37. It should be noted that depending on the outcome of the solid waste financial plan update, the number of trucks being requested for replacement could change. Staff recommends council approve the lease purchase of three, 2025 Peterbilt 520 solid waste trucks from Rush Truck Center and resolution number 5531 authorizing a lease and escrow agreement be entered into with ZMFU, Roman numeral two incorporated, a subsidiary of Zion's Bank Corporation, N.A., to finance the trucks.
Mayor, I have to recuse myself from this one.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Eric. Any discussion? I think Tina, is there any more to add to this, Tina? Pretty straightforward.
No, Mayor, just the only reason it was after the last item was just to ensure that the number of trucks that council wanted to approve were the number of trucks that we were bringing to you this evening.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any discussion? Can we have a motion first then on the recommendation to lease purchase three, 2025 Peterbilt 520 solid waste trucks?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then next, to authorizing number, resolution number 5531, authorizing a lease and escrow agreement to be entered into with Zion's, Zion Bank Corporation. We have a motion for that.
So moved. Second.
Counselor Walker makes the motion, and, and Counselor Ward has the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 7C, amended approval of C Mar GMP for Grace Neil Trunk Sewer Main. It's ENG 23-0014. Staff has completed the process for selecting a construction manager at risk, which is C Mar, for the Grace Neil Trunk Sewer Main in accordance with Arizona Revised Statute Title 34. Friday Construction Incorporated was identified as the most qualified firm for this project. The proposed guaranteed maximum price, GMP, is for $3,834,586. This price is based on construction plans from Sunrise Engineering Incorporated dated, dated August 12, 2024. This project was approved in the fiscal year 2024-25 adopted budget and five-year capital improvement plan. There will be a fiscal impact of $3,834,586 to the wastewater expansion fund. Staff recommends approval. And we have Mike here from our engineering department. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm happy to report that the GMP is well under the fiscal 25-year budget for this project. The budget was $5.1 million. In addition to the actual construction cost that is reflecting the GMP, staff has spent $340,000 to date on design and $25,000 on C Mar pre-construction costs. Bringing the total expenditures, if you include the construction, to $4.2 million, which is still well below, it's like $900,000 less than the, the fiscal year 25 budget. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from counsel?
I do have a question.
Is Vice Mayor.
Timeline for construction?
Uh, we're hoping to start third year, or third week of November.
And how long is it going to take?
I think Bud told me it'd take about six months to do it.
Six months?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And I know you've already covered all this. Do you foresee any hidden surprises coming up in this? Because that can, that happens a lot lately.
Not a dot.
Not a dot.
I don't think so, Mayor. The, the whole point of doing C Mar is that you invite the contractor to participate in the value engineering design part of the, the project.
Okay.
Uh, and so Bud's been out there potholing the, the channel to make sure he knows what the soil is like and everything. And there's, the, the GMP includes a contingency fee for FUD and includes a contingency fee for the, for the city. If we don't use any of those contingency funds, the city keeps all that. Uh, and it's basically just there in case something comes up. And so it, it's included in that cost as well, so there's.
What percentage, more or less, are we talking about?
I want to say it's two and a half percent on each side, two and a half percent for the contractor, two and a half percent for the city.
Okay. Sounds like you've covered all the bases. That's a great thing to hear.
We've done our best.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mike.
I did have another question there.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
The purpose of this project is to increase capacity out in that area, is that correct?
It's basically to serve unsued areas in that area right now.
Right. So there can be more growth out in that area, correct?
That's right.
Okay. Because we were close, if not at max capacity in that area. For, for more growth.
I would say the bigger problem is there's no sewer, it's, it's an unsued area, so there's no, there's no sewer out there right now. So this is basically to serve.
Additional.
Provide sewer.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Anything, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Can we have a motion then for item 7C, amended approval of C Mar GMP for Grace Neil Trunk Sewer Main, ENG 23-0014?
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item number eight, department reports. Eight A, report on development and capacity fees. Tina? Or actually, city manager? Okay.
I'm almost there, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Counsel.
You're fine, Tina.
Not quite like Annie. She's a superstar, she is. Okay, there we go. Thank you so much for allowing me to come back up and present to you this evening. So as with any new fee, we want to share some history of what we've collected and maybe some background on that type of fee. And that's the case with development fees and capacity fees. These are fees that we recently went into effect, or just a few years ago anyhow. And, and I'd like to provide some information on where we are with those particular fees. There we go. So we'll start with development fees and give a little bit of background. Those fees were actually adopted in July of 2021. They went into effect October of 2021. So it's been about three years that they have been into effect. They are governed by a very complex statute, and we follow that statute. And they are really assessed on growth-related building permits for system improvements to fire, police, parks, and streets. They must be used to construct system improvements that are needed to accommodate new developments. So we cannot use those fees on repairs or replacements for existing infrastructure or improvements, only for growth-related improvements. And when we develop those fees, we put together a 10-year, what we call an infrastructure improvements plan, and I'm going to call this an IIP as we go through this. But we put together a 10-year plan where we determine, or the council determined, what those system improvements would be for fire, police, parks, and streets. It, this plan dictates the improvements that the development fees will be spent on. It also dictates the dollar amount, so the maximum amount that we can use development fees on for those, for those particular improvements. fees on for those, for those particular improvements. So here's the development fee schedule. It's different for single-family residential permits versus non-residential permits, and it varies by the type of improvement. So our fire, the fire fee is different than the parks and the police and the street fees. There is, so 100% of the need, of the fee needed for police and fire improvements is being assessed. Only 34% of the fee needed for parks and street improvements is being assessed. And I say that because as we need to pay for those system improvements, those street improvements and some park improvements, more money will end up coming out of sales tax revenue or state shared revenues rather than development fees. So what are some of the system improvements that are included in that plan? So for fire, we've got a fire station, we've got fire apparatus, some communication equipment. For parks, we've got land acquisition, irrigation utilities, site preparation, and amenities like playgrounds and restrooms. For police, it's police station, vehicles, and communication equipment. And for streets, it's arterial streets and improved intersections. So want to provide just what we have collected to date, what it looks like we might collect in the next five years, and whether or not we're going to be using those development fees, what they're, with what, for what they're intended for. So at the end of fiscal year 24, so back in June, we ended up with balances, you'll see here, $434,000 for fire that we've collected over the last two and a half years or so. Police, $278,000, $240,000 for parks, and we ended up with $462,000. We spent a little bit of, on, of development fees on our Eastern Street project and our Wallapai Mountain Road project. Over the next five years, what does that look like? So you'll see what those collections are and what we're estimating anyhow, and that we plan on utilizing almost all of those fees on different types of projects. I'm going to share what that looks like on the next slide. So for fire, we plan on using those for a fire station and for, for Fire Station 25, rather, and for Fire Station 25's truck that they plan on purchasing for that. You're going to notice some highlighted numbers on here, and that's solely just so you're aware that that's the maximum amount of development fees that can go towards the cost of that project. So even though we've got in our budget that the Fire Station 25 might cost us $9 million, we can only use $775,000 in development fees towards that particular project. So we plan on using all of them. Anyhow, as you go through the different uses, these are the items that we plan on using the development fees for over the next five years and what we have used them for to date. Get down to this, system improvements for streets, just want to point out that the Eastern Street Improvements Project, we were able to spend $134, we have, we, we will be using the full $134,000 in development fees for that project. Wallapai Mountain Road, we will be using the full amount allowed. And then we plan on using the rest for the Airway Avenue connection, potentially debt service payments on that project. Just some other information on development fees. So they must be used within 10 years of collection. The plan itself, the 10-year plan, has to be brought to council every five years. So we'll be coming up on that in the next year, year and a half. And certainly at any time, we can always reevaluate it, but we're required to reevaluate it every five years. An audit is required every two years, and there is a report that we are required to post on our website every year, and the finance department does that. We call it our Fees and Uses Report, and it basically gives the same information that I shared with you earlier. So those are our development fees. Quickly looking at capacity fees and what's the difference? Well, their capacity fees are something that we are able to assess on new development for water and wastewater system improvements, and they are actually governed by a different statute. We tend to follow the same philosophy and methodology that we do for development fees on capacity fees. So there's still a 10-year plan, we have to have system improvements for growth purposes, we can't spend more on development fees for the projects than what's dictated in the plan as well. The capacity fee schedule, water capacity fee and wastewater capacity fee, they are all based or determined, those fees are determined on the meter size, the water meter size that's being installed. What are some of the capital improvements that are included in that 10-year plan? For the water side, we've got new storage tanks, booster stations, wells, transmission lines. And on the wastewater side, the majority of it are for new interceptor lines. The agenda item just before that city engineer, Mike Garment, presented on was the Grace Neal Sewer Line. We're able, we actually have that in our 10-year capital improvement plan for capacity fees, so some capacity fees will be covering the cost of that. So fee snapshot on this as well, our water capacity fees and wastewater capacity fees through fiscal year 24, after we use them towards some projects, we have $633,000 left for water capacity fees and just almost $1.3 million for wastewater capacity fees. We do plan on using all of those through fiscal year 29, and you'll see what that looks like. I do want to point out, and I meant to point out on the other slide, that capacity fees and development fees take time to generate, right? So we don't have those monies available to us on day one that we might start a project. So what we tend to do is we tend to utilize other revenue sources. And then once we've generated enough capacity fees or development fees, then we'll basically reimburse that other revenue source. So just want to make sure you're aware of that. Oh, goodness. And that was basically it anyhow, so I can end on that. Maybe that's, that's the curtain call for sure. So if there are any questions that you might have for me on the, this report.
Counsel, any questions for Tina? Tina, I have one. It's sort of related to this. Actual capacity for processing at our wastewater treatment plants. How are we there? And we have, obviously, we have room for growth at the two plants that we have. What do we look like?
Mayor, you're asking the finance director and deputy city manager and engineering question.
I know, this is public works, but.
Here comes Rob.
And it could probably be a pretty brief answer, because this is more just discussing fees as opposed to...
True. I'm just, the part of these fees, can we anticipate for growth? So, I'm sorry to pull us down this rabbit hole, but...
Mayor and council, the Hilltop Plant was built with a 5.1 million gallon a day capacity. Currently, we're around 2 million gallons a day.
Great, okay.
There's a lot more to that story, but...
Sure, you're giving us the, the very shortened abbreviated answer. And what about the downtown one? Where are we at there?
Downtown's about 135,000 gallons a day. There's not much potential for growth downtown, so there's enough to absorb, but we're not going to have large...
No, it's not. Okay. Thanks, Rob, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions for Tina? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Item number eight B, urban camping. Carl, we're going to pick on you again.
Yes, sir. So Annie's going to pull up a PowerPoint presentation, so I did what you guys don't like, is I made a PowerPoint presentation and I didn't give it to you. And, and I apologize for that, but that was a, I drafted the, the ordinance and then put it in a packet, and, and I thought, well, we'll just go through the ordinance as we move along. I thought, oh, that's not very clear. That's what I thought this morning. So I threw this up this morning. All it is, is just taking the paragraphs that are in the ordinance and put it in, in here. I want to start out with, it was great having all those folks earlier at the Call to the Public to talk about what this impact would be, because unfortunately with the, the department reports, we don't take public input. My first comment is, we have, already have a camping ordinance on the books. This is just, my attempt is to give a proposal, have a discussion with you folks to see about cleaning it up, making sure we address all the issues we need to address, making sure it takes off all the legal boxes. Background information is, prior to a Ninth Circuit opinion, which I can't remember what year, grants passed and Martin v Boise took place, but basically, we had the ability to enforce people camping, or however you want to call it, living, sleeping underneath the, the culverts on the side of the street. We could enforce that, and we enforced it, but it was not a, I would call a very strong enforcement. It was more if there's disruptions or needs to deal with it. When the Ninth Circuit issued their opinion that it was unconstitutional to disrupt these folks that are, what they call, they're calling it unhoused and it's involuntarily unhoused, meaning they just had no option or ability to live somewhere, that the Ninth Circuit said it was unconstitutional to basically enforce those ordinances. So those were all put on hold. The Supreme Court, a couple of months ago, issued a ruling that that opinion no longer is valid. It is no longer unconstitutional to enforce your camping ordinances. So with that, my thought was, I really want to update, make sure we hit all the, the ticks that we need to tick, that we need to check off with the legality of the issues and to look at the next steps and what the council's desires are. So if we go to the next slide, this is part of, again, this is pulling out part of, parts of the, the ordinance. This is just two definitions that we're trying to explain what camping means and what public property is. So the camping, obviously, I'm not going to read that, everybody can read that, but it's describing what the activity is. And if you have questions, just yell at me. And I know we had somebody in the audience who was very particular to make sure we had transit stop in there, so, so we do have transit stop that was already in there. But, next slide. So this is going to be the first sec part about public property and camping on public property. Again, I don't want to go through all the details, I just want to make sure you're aware of them, and if you have comments for how you want me to address it, if you like it or make some changes. But basically, it's the, that first paragraph is being out in the street, meaning sitting, laying down. Generally, you're not going to sleep in the street, but it's, there are sometimes you see folks that are out in the street. This is to deal with the impediment of the thoroughfares. Obviously, there's the exception if someone is having a heart attack in the middle of the street, we're not going to charge them for that. Sorry, that wasn't very funny. The next one is, the next paragraph is talking about setting up your structures, setting up your campsite. The third one is obviously dealing with the sleeping in any public properties, and it define, or it shows which those public properties are. The last two paragraphs are looking at some exceptions, meaning, you know, obviously if there's an emergency incident where we have to set up or allow people to, you know, whatever activities happen when there's a state of emergency. The, the final one is, obviously, there's parks activities. If you're out in the park camp, not camping, if you're out in the park using the barbecue, we're not going to charge you for that, that's what that activity's for. Next one. This one is, in all of these, I found at other cities, a, a number of cities all had various ordinance, so they kind of blended things together. This is a private property, and I actually don't think I want to quite leave it private property. I think I, I need to tweak out where we want to, I shouldn't say tweak, I need to figure out what's the best language for that, because it's more talking about the residential neighborhoods. And, and this is the idea of, we have complaints where people live or, yeah, sometimes they're living in their RV and they're on the private property, it's either friends, family, or whoever, that it's a long-term thing. This is to open up for an allowance for, you know, when my kids were little, we would put, put a tent in the backyard and we would sleep in the backyard. Or if you had friends coming over and they had a camper, we'd park in the driveway and it'd stay a couple days. This is to make some allowances for that. Those days are just arbitrary, what I, what I put in there. This is something obviously for discussion. So right now, it says they could, you know, 14 days in a row, five times a year with some gaps in the middle. I don't know if those are the right numbers, but those are numbers that I saw out there, and if we want to discuss that, we can definitely discuss that. Clearly, we don't want people to allow, we don't want property in order to allow people to, to charge them for sleeping in their backyard. And then there's, you know, the junk and debris that kind of comes up with it, but also there's a couple of sections there. We just want to make sure, again, we're, we're not trying to impede what lawful uses that you can have in those properties. And that may or may not be changed a little bit. Again, this is just some proposals, I want to get a feel for what direction you guys are looking for. Next one?
Carl, excuse me.
Oh, yeah, go back.
One second. No, you're fine. Once again, this is not the current ordinance that we have. These are, you've done some tweaking already to it.
Correct. So to be honest with you, this one right here is still, is very, it's like one of the paragraphs of our current ordinance, because the, our current ordinance basically already bans, it defines camping, bans it on commercial, on city property, and then that paragraph right there, it's banning it on commercial property. So I haven't made too many changes with that, because I think the language works, I might adjust a little bit. But this one, again, is the commercial, commercial property, which is those folks that could be in the parking lots, which I know some people are okay with it, some people are not okay with it. There are people in the parking lot that are living in parking lots, and there are people in the parking lots that are the, you know, the half-billion-dollar rig that comes through town and stays the night, and then they move on. So there's issues on how you're going to distinguish some of those things. But this is currently illegal to, to do. There's even signs at, like Walmart, that says, "No camping." But we allow that, or we don't enforce it. Some of the issues, and I've kind of bounced around a little bit and I apologize, some of the issues with the, the commercial property and the camping at those, those places, when people roll into town, they come in at, you know, six, seven o'clock at night, and they're staying for the night, and they're going to be leaving in the morning, law enforcement, do we want law enforcement going up there saying, "All right, you can't, it's illegal to park here, it's illegal to camp here, we want you on the road." Are we concerned about people then aren't then tired putting them on the road in the middle of the night? Those are all issues we have to think about, I have to discuss, and that was some of the issues that we dealt with in the past when we were enforcing the, the ordinance, is to make some allowances for certain things. The next one is, I was putting in, we sometimes have folks that are in the sidewalk and impeding the sidewalks. There's, there's a statute that talks about loitering. You can't loiter. Well, loitering's, the statute to enforce that's unconstitutional. People have the right to assemble, they have the right to be on the sidewalk, they have the right to say, "Hey, can I have some money?" That's all free speech activity. This is an attempt to put some language in there about impeding the flow of the pedestrian traffic on those sidewalks. So I don't see it too often where the sidewalk is completely blocked, but it happens. Sometimes people set up shop and they got all their gear out there, and it makes it difficult for pedestrians to walk through. This will give the law enforcement abilities, you got to adjust your, your, what you're doing here, or we're going to have to issue a citation. And again, I want to make it real clear, we're not trying to impede a person's right to free speech, because we don't want to get sued. We want to make sure people have the, the ability to, to express themselves, because that's what the Constitution says. Next slide. So this one is kind of going through, I don't want to call it some limitations, but it's to try and make sure everybody understands that, yes, we're trying to enforce the law, but we want to give folks an option to be able to adjust their actions before we have to get too far. So basically, it's instead of issuing citation right away, we let them know that they need to be able to relocate if possible. There's, that's opportunity to find resources for some of those folks. We had that town hall, we discussed some of those resources. Again, we don't want to look at, to arrest these folks, that's not the intent, but there is community, I don't want to say community support, there's community concern about some of these folks that are unhoused on the side of the street, blocking the sidewalk, impeding their flow. There's times where some of those activities are criminal or frightening to other individuals. So this is trying to address that and still give some of these folks some opportunities to find a better location. And I know this ordinance overall is saying there's not, there's not a lot of better locations on the street, it's looking for the resources. So again, this ordinance is one facet of how you're going to deal with that. Like, say, we had that town hall meeting to address another facet. And again, we're not trying to limit some, that last paragraph or that last sentence is not to limit the, the normal activities and the use of parks. Again, if someone's at a park and they're taking a break and they lay down and they have like a backpack, well, is that a pillow or are they camping? Or is that just somebody's just taking a break, sunbathing? So there's some ideas that we want to try. There's always those weird nuances that we have to address with this. And that's why you always do have the discretion of the officers to see the situation and make some kind of determination of what's going on, what's the behavior, what's the, what are the issues that we're seeing here? Next slide. Next slide. Right now, I see most places call it a class-one misdemeanor, I don't know if we necessarily need to go that route, but that's what I wrote in there currently. You have three levels of misdemeanors, class one, two, and three. Class one is most serious, we can obviously examine the different levels if we want to do that. Then disposal of abandoned property, this goes back to if those individuals are asked to move, or they leave, or we find belongings, or if they're arrested, we can't just throw away their stuff. So we have to keep a hold of it for, what we're looking at is about 14 days, and make sure that they're aware that we have it where we have it, so they can recover it. So that's kind of a nutshell of, I think that's everything. I think that's kind of a nutshell of what I was looking at, what I found, what I wanted to see, what council's ideas were with this. Yeah, I think that's kind of, hopefully succinct, without being too rambling.
Before we get really into it, can you also kind of briefly summarize what's currently on the books, like, in regards to private? I remember you said commercial is the same, pretty much, but as private?
No, we don't have anything that really addresses the private in our city code, but there's kind of this, it's not clear, because we have the zoning code that says you can't, you know, you're not allowed to live in these RVs, you're not allowed to have these kind of activities that are camping.
And what about public sidewalks?
Public sidewalks, again, we have that in our code.
They're addressed already.
It's already, yeah, the public side, public places and commercial places are clearly addressed in our code.
Is public spaces as similar to, as it is to this?
Being defined?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's basically the same thing.
As strict?
As strict.
As this?
Yeah, yeah, this is, I would say there, this is trying to be a little more clear, public places, but yeah, in the current code, it is just as strict, just maybe not as clear.
Just to clarify, our sidewalks and our public spaces are already enforced with something similar to this in strength, they're just, or there's a code in place.
There's a code in place.
But it might not be enforced.
Correct.
Strictly.
Correct. Like, say, the enforcement, because the Supreme Court just issued their opinion, and I'm rewriting the code, we've not taken that next step, because we're trying to make it a little bit clear, make sure we get council's direction on what they're looking for before we start whatever action it's going to be, whether it's, you know, the warnings, the citations, whatever.
Last question before we really start. So just for clarification, and tell me if I'm right to think this, public and commercial are pretty much addressed similarly, this new code really outlines private, in addition?
Correct. This code, if we want to go that way, will then definitely make it very clear for private property, but it just clarifies and makes, it addresses some weaker language, this adoption, this new code.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I had a couple of things. In thinking about it, and all of the comments during Call to the Public, I guess I would have liked to seen a comparison of what we currently have versus what does this change? Because a lot of our speakers, I think, are under the impression that we don't have anything, and that now we're going to lay down the hammer, and this is how it's going to be. So I really wish that the public would have stayed, because this would have been great information for them to hear. So that's my number-one comment. In section 7-131, you talk about the private property, and it says in here, 14 consecutive...
Can you pull it up, Amy?
17, exceed, shall not be permissible for any length of time exceeding 14 consecutive days, subject to the following conditions. So the way I read that, and just clarify if I'm misunderstanding, is that they could potentially camp on private property 70 days out of the year, as long as they have 30-day intervals in between?
Correct. And I'm not advocating for this.
Yeah, I'm not advocating for that also.
No, 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 this is just numbers that I, that are in there.
Okay, good, that's good to hear.
I want you to provide what you want.
Okay, so, so I think that needs some discussion amongst council, because, you know, we already have an issue with, even though we have the zoning in the code for RVs and camper-like, you know, and trailers and things like that, I still have concerns with that number there.
A hundred percent, you know, personally, I think half that is probably more reasonable.
I could support that. So the other thing is, you know, we heard a lot about homelessness, and, you know, hosting the town hall, we know that it's a problem in our community, and, you know, we don't want to target the homelessness. However, this definitely tends to lean that way, and I'm hoping that, maybe by getting the chief up here, I know you talked about officer discretion, you know, there was a lot of, in the Call to the Public, talk about being arrested, and being, you know, separated from family members, and I'm super compassionate to all of that, and I just, I want to know what that officer discretion looks like, I want to know, what does that look like when you come upon somebody that now you know is having a hardship in life, and they're, and we know from the town hall that the resources are limited, and we don't have a place to house these people, and they don't have a place to go. So what does that look like? Tell me, tell me how that's handled, if you could, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, while, please, Chief, come on up, while Chief's getting there, I just, I appreciate your comments, Vice Mayor, and I appreciate all the comments by the public that were here earlier, and I think, you know, in preparing for this, I think there's, there's a, something needs to be considered as far as the homelessness, I think, that was discussed during the town hall, are the same homeless issues that were brought up by the speakers today, you know, those that are struggling, that need a help, you know, need a handout to be able to help them up, and help them find those resources. And really, I believe that was council's intention with the town hall, is to be able to identify what resources are available for those people that are looking at that. On the opposite end of the spectrum, and I believe Chief had a great, great comment at the town hall, was, you know, there's various types of folks in this situation, there's those that are on hard times, and just need that help to get back on the saddle, and then there are those that are choosing this lifestyle. And unfortunately, I think it's those that do not want that help, that are avoiding that help, those are the ones that are causing problems for the community, for our business owners downtown that, you know, have to walk past somebody sleeping on the bench, you know, that are afraid for their businesses, you know, that, I don't know how many times we've had, you know, businesses call in that somebody's, you know, defecated on their front, you know, their front door. So, you know, there is this balance to find, you know, definitely, we have that feeling to help, that want to help, that desire to help, and I think the town hall showed that, but at the same time, we have businesses that need that same help and that same protection, so.
Well, and to that point, I am interested to hear, how do you differentiate? Because there are obviously those that are out there doing malicious things, you know, committing crimes, you know, scaring the public, and then you have the family that has been unhoused, or the parents who are choosing to live on the streets, because that's their only option. So how are you differentiating, and how can we make those people feel safe, and that they're not going to be harassed by law enforcement?
So there's no black-and-white answer to that, but officer discretion is something that all of our officers have, when it comes to traffic stops, issuing a citation or a warning, and on rare occasions, a verbal warning. So that same discretion would apply to a lot of areas that we deal with, including this camping and private property issues along those lines. I appreciate what Manager Walsh was saying, because it does help me provide direction to my team, if someone's transient, and these are my definitions, by the way, it just helps me direct and lead the team. If they're transient, meaning they're going from one part of the country to another, it's pretty, usually, it's pretty clear, when you're communicating with them, talking through them, they're just trying to get from one point to another, whatever the circumstances are. And then there's those that are, I'd say, truly homeless, meaning, a lot of the examples we heard today, they were homeless based on life circumstances, you fill in those blanks, they are looking for help, resources, to help them get on and back into their life. What I'm calling vagrancy, and just by the pure definition of vagrancy, are those that are choosing to live a lifestyle that I now would add, can create issues with public safety, and that's what I'm concerned about. So if we allow unsanctioned camping within the city limits, it does impact negatively community safety, regards to the vagrancy aspect of it. Now, I'm not saying that they're happy living in this lifestyle, but based on mental health issues, drug issues, substance use issues, behavioral, whatnot, they're choosing to live the lifestyle. And to me, all three of those requires a different attitude of enforcement. And the more, I'll call it aggressive, or to make it less convenient to remain in the community, would be the vagrancy side of things, and that's where this is applied, maybe a little more strict. So the clarity that Carl was talking about as well, is currently, if someone's camping in a trailer, or the trailer's parked in front of their house, they can move it, they can roll their wheels, and it's moved, and the clock starts again. So I believe that's addressed in this as well?
Yeah, that, that's, I apologize, that's something else, but I know what you're, that's the, just parking the trailer.
So that's an example of the clarity that this brings. It's another issue, another ordinance, but some of the clarity that this provides doesn't mean my officers are going to force it more strict, it just makes it clear that it's a violation or not. So, other than numbers, but the content, I would support the content, whether it's five times a year, 30 in between, that's up to you, to you folks, so. But in regards to the officer discretion, I hope that that clarifies that.
So it does, and on the vagrancy side, I completely understand and support and agree. So what about the family? There's no resources, I mean, let's just say, I don't want to say there's no resources in Kingman, but let's just say, resources are at capacity, and there is nowhere for these families to go, and their only option is to live in their car in the park or in a parking lot. That's the story I give to you, how do you treat that as an officer?
I would say, that's rare, but in its purest form, I would never support or encourage my officer to arrest somebody, and then the child is taken away and handed over to state services. Nothing's been accomplished in that, but I would tell you, that's very rare. It happens, when I say rare.
Well, I mean, we just had Call to the Public, how many people came up here and told us of some instances where that was their only option? So although I respect that you say it's rare, it could become more common in the coming months or years.
If it's, I'm sorry to interrupt, if it's public safe, public property, there's latitude. If it's on private property, then we enforce the desires of the property owner.
Okay. All right. I just, I want to give those folks some peace of mind, and show some compassion and some grace.
There would definitely be compassion. A recent example, one of my officers, we just celebrated him this morning, he had purchased a hotel, this was a month ago, for an elderly person that was living out of her car, and that was, and he did that on his own, and it's something that we, we don't encourage my officers to pay out of their own pocket, but they sure have the ability, but he did that. So that's just a good example of the compassion, the compassion and the empathy that I support, but he was able to do that, and then was able to get services for that person through Adult Protective Services that she needed to no longer live on the street.
So those folks that are looking for a hand up, we're encouraging them to stay in our community and find those resources and that help. Those that are vagrants in that category, we're encouraging them, and will help them move along to other communities if they're not productive citizens.
Well, I would just say, encourage them not to be vagrant in our community.
Yes.
And I'm trying not to talk too ill, but those are the folks that I really, zero tolerance at some point, we're no longer going to be putting up with that, because they're, they're not here for the right reasons.
Okay.
But all their officers have resource lists in their car, that they can call and try to make a connection. Shelters might be full, but sometimes there's victim services, if it's a woman with children, I know our abuse shelter always makes room, putting them in a hotel, not always, but oftentimes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just, one comment, I thought it was important that the Chief mentioned, just wanted to reiterate, generally, camping on private property, that is something that's brought to their attention by the property owner. So in those cases, as Chief mentioned, we generally rely on what is being requested by that property owner. So if, you know, say, if they're camping in a, I think it was mentioned in a church parking lot, if the church isn't calling us, telling us that they've got people camping in their parking lot, generally, we won't be aware of it, so we wouldn't be acting on that. Now, if the church calls us and says, "Hey, this car's been here for three days, we'd like you to help them move along," then at that point, we would send somebody out to deal with that.
So you bring up a good point. So we have some commercial areas where camping overnight, you know, stays are common, and so as long as that property owner isn't having a problem with that, we're not going to be enforcing anything.
No, not correct.
Okay.
Generally, if it becomes an issue, you are going to start getting phone calls, if someone's allowed to camp. Other businesses, other RV parks, other, right, they're going to call you, and you're going to make the phone calls, and then we're going to be expected to go enforce the camping ordinance. We would do that as well, and the property owner wouldn't have to get involved directly, either.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just, I just wanted to add, all of this is just, this is just one tool in the toolbox, this is not a singular option. I just want to make sure everybody's aware that there's, there's other facets of this, like I say, we had the town hall, knowing that we need to look at resources, I think, just want to understand, this is one toolbox, or one tool in the box.
Okay. Carl, on this camping on private property, on number two there, were the times, five times per county year, did you pull that from other cities?
Yeah, that came from other cities. Yeah, those were just numbers from other cities, and I thought they were high, but I, they were generous, generous is a good word for it. I just, I left it there for comment from the council. To me, I thought they were overly generous, because, you know, when I had my kids sleep in the backyard, I'm not doing that for 14 days, and I'm not inviting my friends over for 14 days either. But I've had people come over for a night or two in a camp, yeah.
Sure. Okay. Counsel?
My problem with it is, we have the ordinance, we don't enforce it, and you see these guys everywhere. I mean, I understand the people, that there are people out there that can't help it, but in my opinion, a lot of the people out there, on purpose, they choose to live that way. And I think that we need to enforce the ordinance, and let things fall where they fall. It's either you comply, or move along, or continue to have a problem. If the ordinance is there, and we don't enforce it, we might as well not have it, we might as well just get rid of it. That's my opinion.
So I just want to, I want to make sure I was really clear that, I understand that position, we have an ordinance, and we couldn't enforce it because of the court. The court just said, within the past couple of months, we can, but I want this input, what you guys are telling us.
And that was, that was my point, Carl. I know that before, we didn't enforce it because we couldn't, but now that we have it, we need to enforce it, and that's my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor Ward. Yes, Counselor Rick?
I kind of, this had me thinking about what would happen as the number of homeless increases, and it seems to be on a trend up, especially with the age of the homeless being more seniors are becoming more prevalent as well. I started getting a little concerned about, when I first read this, about where they would go, that, you know, you can't be here, you can't be here, where do you go? And then the first answer that I had in my mind was outside of city limits, whether that's into the desert, or into the county somewhere, but also, I was wondering about who would probably go under, you know, try to sneak under like a little causeway in a bridge, or in one of the washes, yeah, the culverts underneath, you know, the tunnels, behind buildings, or in docks, or something like that. Well, call me crazy, but what if there's a space, I don't know where, so, no pitchforks yet, but what if we had, if, would it... But what if we had, if, would it be possible to suggest somewhere where everyone could go that way? We've at least gathered everyone who's looking for help. It does, I'm not saying like a free lot, but I'm a closed space with maybe some sort of entry fee, minimal, just to cover operating costs where no drugs are allowed, where everyone's gathered together so that our mobile showers and our mobile haircuts and, and maybe mobile nurses can co- uh, you know, meet everyone at one place, somewhere that we would be able to minimize crime because it is under, you know, watch per se. Would something like that be possible? I don't know where, I don't know whether it's city property. I, I, I'm not suggesting anywhere. But this conversation is, is intriguing because as the senior, as the age of homeless goes up, also mobility is going to go down even more than what it is already.
Yeah. So my, my first comment to that is the people are already sleeping in the culverts and the washes and behind the business. Those already, that's already happening. The, the part about an area that's kind of beyond the scope of what this ordinance is, but I know there have been some discussions in some larger cities that have looked at some of those. And like I say, that's a, it's not this ordinance that may or may not work. You have costs involved, like you say, because you're trying to, you know, if you're, you have to police them because you look, look what happened in Phoenix when they, they didn't take the necessary action, they got sued. So definitely if you're looking at doing that, I think there would be some people that would not want that because I think, I, I'm not talking about, well, I mean, the general public.
No, I'm saying if, if you invite the homeless, you put a homeless camp there and invite the homeless, it's going to fill up. I mean, look at LA, look at all the big cities. And, and when they move them to an area, like the area right outside, as you go into LA on your right, it's, it's just almost a mile of just blue tarps and garbage. And, and when you, when you designate an area where they can do that, they're going to do it. And I, I, I would not be in favor of that whatsoever.
Just giving up a whole street or something of that sort. I was, you know, with, not necessarily an HOA, but something similar to an HOA, where they have regulations and drug-free and, you know, rules to be in there. It's basically a regulated campground more than it is an abandoned street or skid row or something.
The only thing is, for the most part, the ones that cause the problems don't comply with regulations.
I understand that. The, the, I guess I, I want to assume that most of the homeless are of the sort that we heard today, where they aren't, you know, causing problems, malicious, vagrant, that they want that hand up and they don't, I mean, okay, they come to you smiling and they say, hey, I'm not allowed to, can I camp here? You say, no. Where do, where do you send them? What do you say to them? Like, what's your answer? Just sorry, I don't know where you can go? Like, as a city, I feel like we should be able to answer that question.
I don't, uh, I don't see that as, as our problem. I really don't. I mean, we try to help who we can help. We have a lot of organizations that will help if people want help. And the ones that don't, I, I have.
So should the city be responsible for creating more organizations that provide the aid that you're recommending?
I don't think that's our responsibility.
How would we fund that?
You're responsible for your supply.
Exactly.
No, so I'm saying like.
So can I jump in? That would be a lovely discussion if we were talking about, you know, some alternative things beyond this. I think the tertiary, the little discussion here is probably okay, but we, before we get too deep into that, this is more dealing with an ordinance, addressing the urban camping. That would be another, that's a different topic beyond this ordinance and.
Yeah, we're trying to address social ills and we need to.
I'm just trying to get the one tool in the toolbox.
I understand your compassion, Counselor.
I, I also understand where the, when you mentioned the social ills, I get where that comes from too. So I agree with that.
Okay. So Counsel, what kind of direction would we want to give to our attorney?
Well, I think I would like to say in seven dash one thirty-one, cutting that down in half is, is what I would like to support. Um, this is going to be a crazy twist, but is there any way to put discretion in this document? When it comes to enforcement? So that it's somewhat of a safety net? I mean, I, I know it's up for interpretation and everybody's interpretation is different, but.
I'm going to say no. And the reason I would say no is once you start writing that into it, then it becomes open for challenges. So when we are enforcing it, then it's going to be, then we're going to have to defend the discretionary action when we take it, if we have it written down and we have to comply with it very specifically. As opposed to the officer looking at the totality of the circumstances of what they know, how often have they dealt with this person? Do they know them? Do they know the situations that give them that ability to, to make those determinations? And that's baked into, to law enforcement. Then we take the next step. If law enforcement takes action, then it comes to my office and the prosecutor has discretion as well. And the prosecutor can decide, hey, this doesn't meet those or can offer certain deals or resources to try and move it, move them out of the criminal justice system. But we are the, the criminal justice system is the worst place to deal with homelessness. Again, it's something you have to be in front of with these other societal resources. But baking in discretion into the language makes it problematic.
Okay. So can we do this? Can we, um, can we do, uh, definitions of behavior? So we have those that are vagrant, we have those that are unhoused, we have those that, you know what I'm saying? You don't like that either.
No, I apologize. I, I like what you're saying. I understand what you're saying, but, and, and I feel it, I get it. But when, again, you're cat, you're, then you're starting to categorize people.
I'm not categorizing people, I'm categorizing behavior.
Right. Mr. Mayor, if I might just, just, and I appreciate where you're, you're trying to go, Vice Mayor. I, I think in relating this, you know, just as an example, a speeder. You know, if somebody's driving forty-five in a thirty-five, they're speeding. Now, that officer's going to pull them over. If they say, hey, I, I'm in an emergency, I got to get to the hospital, he's going to have that discretion and write on there. If it's, you know, some guy that just doesn't care and says, hey, I'm, I'm doing what I want, he's getting that ticket. So I, I think, you know.
But you also have, to that point, you also have different behaviors than speeding, right? You have, I mean, if somebody's going twice as, twice over the legal limit, they're considered whatever that's considered. You know, I mean, it's, it's more egregious. So, I mean, I kind of, that, that's where I'm going with this is like, if it's more egregious, then it's going to be dealt with in a, in a more.
So, I, I get it.
I know. Am I giving you a headache, Carl?
You are, but that's okay. I appreciate it. Because, going back to the speeding one, that's simple because it's very defined. It's, you know, five miles over the limit or it's twenty miles where it becomes criminal. The stat, the fines are set on certain things. That's super easy to do. But when you're going to have the officer, officer have to, okay, I know this person fits these behaviors and I got to check these off on the box. And they're making these evaluations that the courts may not say they're equipped to make some of these evaluations. They're not equipped to say they have a, a mental health issue. They're not an expert to be able to make that testimony in court. Which is why I think you try and keep the discretion back on their side informally where they get to deal with that situation. I, I completely understand because I agree that when you put these laws down, that if we want, we could go enforce it a hundred percent for everybody constantly, depending on your resources. But the officers, we don't have the resources to do that. You don't have the resources to put everybody in jail. It's over a hundred dollars a day to put somebody in jail. We don't want to do that. That's costing the city money and it's not money that could be used in a more beneficial manner somewhere else. Which is why this is to deal with this issue, this, that keeps saying tool. And then we have to look at those other tools to try and address those societal.
What about acts versus categories or?
It, well, these are acts.
Public nuisance versus impeding traffic? Because impeding is kind of, doesn't impeding leave a little bit up to dis- uh, dis- to how you interpret it as well?
Well, yeah, if someone was lying down in the middle of the roadway, there'd be the impeding traffic and probably a death wish.
But on the sidewalk, uh.
But on the sidewalk, yes, there's some, there's going to be some room for interpretation. Again, that's where the officer is going to be able to say, hey, you've got a box and you're sitting up here and people can't walk through.
But this is.
Scooch back.
This doesn't necessarily mention public nuisance so much as it does as taking up space, right?
Correct. This is just addressing, this, the sidewalk one is just addressing someone impeding the flow of pedestrian traffic in the sidewalk.
So if they're laying on the side at the foot of a building, that's camping?
That really wasn't the intent of the sidewalk one, but yeah, I, because the sidewalk one is generally.
For the vendors?
No, 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 no. It's Stockton Hill Road.
Okay.
When you see some of the intersections, that's the intent of that one, where they, sometimes they set up camp where they're asking for money. They'll have, you know, boxes and crates and they have all sorts of stuff. They're not camping, but they're, they've set up shop. That's to try and address that. If you're talking about the person who is sleeping on the sidewalk, we would definitely call that the sleeping part, the camping.
What about if someone's standing in the middle of the sidewalk waving at everyone?
As long as I can walk by, good to go. I'm a big guy, so maybe I have to walk in the, the gravel, but, you know, that's fine. And that's waving it, cars is fine. That's your first minute right to wave at a car. It's your first minute right to ask for change.
But if they're standing in the middle of a sidewalk, you might not, I mean, someone could technically report.
Yeah, we're kind of getting nitty gritty. The, the officer would just say, don't, yeah, don't, don't block the flow of traffic. Or if I'm walking by and someone's blocking my way, say, hey, can I get through? I'm hoping they'll do that. If they don't, I have to walk around. I don't expect someone to go to jail because I have to walk in the gravel. But if they're blocking a lot of people, they're really setting up camp there, then that might be the concern. So.
I know that, like, I really agree that our office, our police officers are awesome. But you don't know what's going to happen in five, ten years, how much discretion changes as flavor and tone of society changes. So that was the only thing that I'm kind of concerned about is like, if we say discretion is, we, we depend on this undefined discretion today, where does that leave us in five years?
We depend on that undefined discretion for every criminal charge. For the officer and for my office, because I have discretion to prosecute or not prosecute cases.
Okay.
So, so that discretion is baked in. And if there's a problem, then the council revisits it.
I was going to say, we, we, we readdress it. We come back to it in two years if we need to. Yeah.
So we're going to have an ordinance that is going to be imposed or not imposed based off of the officer's discretion?
Every ordinance and statute is based on officer discretion.
It's there for, to use as a guide, that they have the backing of the ordinance, but they, to allow them, okay.
If they feel they need to take action.
All right.
Basically complaint driven. Nobody sees if nothing's going to happen, but if somebody complains, the officers will go look.
The officers may see something that they have to address because they think it's public safety. You know, they're driving by and they see something that's.
I think we need this ordinance because number one, we need to protect the property rights of the property owners, the businesses. I mean, I feel for the people that are homeless, but if the officers are making contact and, and they see they need help, they're going to try to help, get them help, or they're going to move them on. Or if, you know, we've, we've had a couple, I've called manager Walsh here lately. These people build camps and then when they leave, they leave it. Now the property owners calling us going, why aren't you guys enforcing this? I, I mean, we need to do something, but we need to have some compassion and be able to try to help them. I mean, us as a city, we don't have the funding to build a camp. You know, but we, we need to protect our homeowners, our business owners, because you wouldn't want this in your neighborhood.
And our citizens.
Yeah.
That's right.
And that's the way we got to look at it. You would not want this in your neighborhood.
And I'm not against the people that can't help themselves. That's, that's not my problem. My problem is with the ones that you see laying along the walls and stuff in the alleys and hanging around and they leave their garbage everywhere. They, there was one of them that was sleeping on sixty-six in a, in a tunnel there. And he had, the pile of garbage kept getting bigger all the time outside of that culvert that goes across under sixty-six. That's what I don't want to see. And nobody wants to see it. I've had, I have people call me, I have people email me complaining about different vagrants and, and it seems like there's one on every corner. And we need to discourage it. That's my.
We would all agree that that's the part that we don't want in our city. But there were some very scared people up here at Call to the Public that, that, you know. So, so I'm trying to have some compassion, but I, I get where you're coming from and I get that we can't, you know, categorize people. It's not the thing to do. So I support this. I support the change on seven dash one thirty-one, cut it in half and then I'm, I'm good with this.
Carl, I, I like what you've done. I think you've put a lot of time and effort into this. I think you've gotten some advice from the chief.
Yes, sir.
Being working hand in hand with that. Vice Mayor, I disagree. I would leave two the way it is. I think he's, Carl has talked to other cities and seen what they've done. That right there gives us a little more compassion if we want to, a little more leniency on number two. And so I just leave the times the way they are. That's not a terrible thing. And it does happen. Sometimes, Counselor Eric, as you mentioned, sometimes family members fall on hard times. Maybe they need to stay at our house in a, in a motorhome in our backyard for two weeks till they figure out what they're doing. I mean, I know, no one likes that, but on the same token too, we are showing some compassion by allowing that. So.
If I were a neighbor of yours, that would not make me happy.
Even in my neighborhood, I see it happening.
I know. It should be discouraged. I'm not saying it shouldn't happen and should be completely removed, but I'm saying it should be discouraged.
I understand.
Can I ask one more question? Uh, is it possible to include something where if someone does need a certain private property or ask, if someone has a private property and they want someone to camp on there, maybe it's a cert, special, can they come up to council and ask for permission? Like a. In a non-business way?
I think you're, you're going back to your, your original scenario.
Right.
Like, based on the mayor's last comment, that, that family member, maybe two weeks is enough. They ask, hey, I need three weeks and they come to council and ask for that. I mean, that, that would, that would make me very okay with voting as is.
I guess my point would be, I don't think you need to, having an exception petition to the court, or to the court, to the council might be a little more difficult, but I would tell you, I'm going to speak for the chief. I would tell you if there was somebody that was on a property for two weeks and said, we're, we're going to get our house and we're going to be in it in seven days, the chief's going to, is going to be cool with it.
Okay.
He's a nice guy.
All right.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, Counselor.
What about unruly teenagers that you want them to camp in your backyard?
Yeah, I had, when I was a scout master, I had unruly teenagers camping.
Okay.
So I, I, we did that. Not for fourteen days. I would have been very unhappy scout master. But, but yes, you do that kind of stuff. I mean, it's, it's, the, this camping on private property was more trying to address, I think the vice mayor's concerns with some issues, but also address, again, you know, there are people that fall in hard times and you stay with a family member. Hopefully more of them will stay in the house than, than, you know, setting up shop in the, in the yard. But, uh, these are the options. But I don't know what the tone of the council is for the timeframe on this particular one.
Well, and you bring up a point, and I think this is addressed in something, and there is, I mentioned in the backyard, I would not want to see anything happening in the front yard or in the driveway. That would be, I would rule that out. And there was, so right there, that's part of, that's a whole nother issue. But I think you'd, you'd. you, we've addressed that in the zoning code anyway.
Yeah, and, and this does, I think I said something where you have to meet the, the setback requirements.
But said, yeah, but setbacks, that still could be not in their back
So we're gonna make this more complicated for me to drive?
There is no, no delineation from front yard, backyard, side yard.
Exactly.
Anywhere.
So, so these are, and, so, yeah, Vice Mayor, you bring up a very good point, yeah.
Thank you.
So you want more? I can draft wherever you guys want, so if you want So, yeah, I would say we're I, I was envisioning tents, basically people setting up a tent in the backyard. They're not gonna set up a tent in the front yard, but what about the person who pulls in the camper in the driveway? You don't want that.
No, because we do have those. We have some that are parked right in the front yard.
No, I completely understand.
Yeah.
So, so I'm just, so
At the rear of the property.
If they're gonna do this, it has to be In the rear of the property. Behind the front line of the property.
Behind a wall or behind a fence.
And behind a site restricted fence.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
Leave the time the same.
Well, that's a good question. I know Vice Mayor wants one way, rest of the council, what's your flavor on that? What do you want?
I'm fine with that. I could support that.
We can always come back.
Just for you, Mayor.
This is true. Well, you're being kind, thank you.
Just for you, Mayor.
So I'll do backyard site restricted fence. Site restricted fence only goes up to six foot, so just understand.
That's fine.
Could have like a
That'll cover a tent.
Big tent, like a
You bring up a good point, Vice Mayor, though, I mean, giving, and of course, in such a way where it does not affect sanitary safety, how would you do that? Public sa, I mean, not public safety, but, you know, where it not becomes a nuisance, whether it be smell
Right.
Trash.
And, and that's addressed here already.
Okay, that's why I wanted to make sure.
You know, the
Right.
Camp accumulate discard
Okay, good.
Garbage stuff.
Okay.
And this is not meant to be an unimproved lot, so I can make, I'll even define that, has to be an approved lot.
An approved lot.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks.
I didn't think about that.
This is why we have these things, because sometimes I don't think about this.
Counsel, everybody? Counselor Ward?
I'm, I'm good with the way it is, but that's me.
Okay, well, that's, with a little bit of tweaks, just like you said.
I'll clean it up.
Okay. And we'll see it back probably in a month or so, two months?
We'll see when I can, I got a couple things on the
The next agenda.
I'm not putting any pressure, I, I mean, I just, just
It, it may be that's, I, I may get it the second meeting in November, but I don't wanna overload it because I already have two things that are coming on the second meeting in November.
And we only have one meeting in November anyway.
That's what I'm, yeah, so it, it could be then or it could be December.
So maybe some of the wishes from our public comment will actually be pushed off anyway.
We, we try to pace out so we don't overload the council meetings, so we're here at, you know, eight o'clock.
It is time to go home, isn't it? Okay. Thanks, Carl, we appreciate that report. And Chief, thank you for your input too. Item number nine, announcements by Mayor, council members and city manager. City Manager Tim Walsh.
Nothing tonight, sir, thank you.
Would you, one quick thing, would you like to introduce our new public info, what are, I'm sorry, what's the
Absolutely.
PIO, Public Information Officer, but she's here tonight, and this is her first council meeting.
This is Sarah Hall, she started this week with us, we're very fortunate to have her, she is our, shoot, and I just lost, you got me going, public information officer, but we have a better name for it, Annie's gonna help me with it.
Communications Marketing Coordinator.
There it is, thank you.
There you go.
We, we got Sarah, Sarah is very familiar with the area, she has been with Supervisor Johnson's office for quite some time, so she is very aware of the, the issues here in Mojave County and especially in Kingman, and has a, a great history of, of providing a lot of Supervisor Johnson's Office, marketing, public information, press releases and all of that. So we're very happy to have her, and with that, I'll turn some time over to Sarah.
Thank you, Mayor Watkins, council members, manager Walsh, I'm very excited for this opportunity, and I look forward to making a great story for Kingman, and I'm very excited for this, so, thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Welcome to the team.
Welcome. Thank you, I'm happy to be here.
Okay, thanks. Counselor?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Savage?
Yeah, go ahead. After that depressing conversation trying to figure out how we're gonna deal with this, I got some good news. My wife and I have been without a pet for two years. We went to the Mojave County Animal Shelter last Tuesday and we got a Cthulhu leopard spot, two years old. We haven't had a pet in two years, so we adopted him from the county, the new one out of Burbank, and we've had him for one week, so we're pretty happy about that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ward?
Nothing, I'm not
Counselor Eric? Vice Mayor?
Yes, I, I just wanted to give huge kudos to Josh Noble and his team for the iHeart Route sixty-six. I know Mearsmen, they had a part in it, I think a lot of departments had a, had a, a part in setting it up, but that was a wonderful event. It's the first time that I was able to be in town on that weekend, and I just had such a fun time. It was so nice to see so many families out, so many community members come to the event and just truly enjoy, enjoy the day. So, it was beautiful weather and it was a, it was a great event, so, thank you.
And the unveiling of the Route sixty-six shield?
We did, I, I was gonna save that for you.
Oh.
We unveiled the Route sixty-six shield, and right as soon as we unpackaged it, there were people lined up to sit in the sixes and get their picture taken. I saw so, several social media posts, so, thanks to the EDAC team for bringing that forward and proposing that we put that there. The improvements at Lewis Kingman Park are amazing, so I can't wait until we get bathroom facilities, but everything else is, it's coming along, it's, it's quite the park. So, was very happy to see it uptown, I was very, it, it's the perfect place for it, so, thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Counselor Ward?
Yes, I rarely do this, but I wanna compliment Jack and the contractors that are doing the chip seal over on Apache and that area. I have, over the last year, I've been very critical of the guys doing the chip seal, these guys have done a fantastic job. They gravel, instead of being deep like it was back in the spring, they've swept it and swept it and swept it, and, and I mean, it is as neat a job of chip seal as I've ever seen.
Thanks, Counselor Ward, appreciate that. Just a couple quick things, of course, we had town hall last week and we had some good participation, I think there were a lot of entities, and a lot of more information was brought forward on, on homelessness that maybe we can use and, and refer people to, and the different agencies are available to help. Obviously, we've already talked about it briefly, but in November, we will not have our city council meeting the first Tuesday because of Election Day, so I just wanna make sure everybody understands that. And so, we, our second meeting in November will be probably a busy meeting. Hopefully it's not as late as this one, but anyway. Couple things coming up, I just wanna mention that's going on in the community, tomorrow, October sixteenth, Wednesday at five thirty is the annual Walk Away From Drugs and Kingman, Keep Kingman Safe Expo. And that'll be happening, there are three starting points, one is over by Smith's Food and Drug, the other one is at Mother Road Harley Davidson, and the third one is at Firefighters Memorial Park, and then from those three areas, we'll walk to Centennial Park, and there will be a, a number of different agencies set up. I know the fire department always puts on a great, has fire engines over there, and kids love that, and all, a number of different public entities. Police Department will be there, I'm sure, and so, I just wanna make sure the public's aware of that. And then, once again, our Parks Department is always there doing a great job, we appreciate the activities they supply for our, our community, and they have a drive-in movie night, October eighteenth, and that is at the down, the South Side Park, right, Mike? And that'll start it probably when it gets dark, at dusk, the movie, and the movie that will be playing is Casper, probably Casper the Friendly Ghost, right? Okay. So anyway, great things going on in our community, and there's always things to do. Annie, people can go to the city website, it's pretty easy to find these activities where these things are listed.
Yeah, all the events for Kingman, Tourism has a website dedicated specifically to it.
Right.
Go Kingman.
Go Kingman.
And there is a calendar of all different kinds of community events on there.
So I please, I invite people to do that, to see all the other activities, I have a list of a number of different activities, those are probably the most important things that are coming up. So, on that, I have nothing else for tonight.